Good evening and welcome to the October tenth meeting of the Town Council. If you kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I point the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under announcements, I have the state general election will be held Tuesday, November fifth, from seven AM to seven PM. There are three polling locations in Merrimack. James Mastercola Upper Elementary School located at twenty-six Babusick Lake Road, Merrimack Middle School located at thirty-one Madeline Bennett Lane, and Saint John Newman Church located at seven oh eight Milford Road. You can visit the town website, merrimacknh.gov, or call the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office at six zero three four two four three six five one to determine your designated polling place. Upcoming council meetings, Thursday, October twenty-fourth, Thursday, November seventh, and Thursday, November twenty-first, all three meetings at seven PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To piggyback on your registered to vote, are you registered to vote? Visit app.sos.nh.gov. If you're not, you can register at the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, nine AM to four thirty, where you can take advantage of the upcoming Supervisors of the Checklist sessions. They are scheduled sessions for voter registration and/or changing your voter records on the following dates and times. Wednesday, October sixteenth, from seven to eight PM. Tuesday, October thirtieth, from seven to eight PM. This is the last time to get on the checklist for the November fifth state election. Please, if you're questioning whether or not you're registered to vote, please register before the November fifth election. It'll save time. You won't have to stand in long, long lines to wait to register to vote. You can just walk in, grab your ballot, vote, and get in and get out. But you can do same-day registration. If you do not register before the thirtieth, you can do same-day registration on the fifth of November. The Rotary Club will be holding their annual Rotary Christmas Tree Sale at Watson Park again this year. More details to follow as we get closer to the date. So I just want to let the council know that the Rotary approached me, and I gave them permission to go ahead and sell their trees there. This has been, I would have to say, at least seven years now that they've been doing that. And, you know, the Rotary does, a lot of those proceeds do come back to this community, and they help out the community. The Merrimack Planning Board is of need of members. Please check out the committee volunteer opportunities on the town website and any other committees. They're all listed on our website, and if you're interested, please submit a letter of interest to the town manager's office, and we'll get you scheduled for an interview with the boards. All DPW departments included, Highway, Solid Waste, Recycling, and Wastewater Division will be closed Wednesday, October twenty-third, between the hours of ten forty-five and one PM for a training. So we're doing some training before the winter season hits, and we're closing down the wastewater facility and the recycling center at Solid Waste and the transfer station. In addition, supposedly this weekend, the wastewater treatment plant, access to wastewater treatment plant will be limited. The railroad is coming in and doing some construction on the railroad tracks in front of the plant. So there will be no commercial or individual access allowed in the facility at the time they're working. They're supposed to start on Sunday, it's supposed to be concluded on Monday. They think they can get it done all on Sunday, the thirteenth, however, I really don't know if the paving areas, the paving tar asphalt plants would be open for them to go pave it. So if not, they'll pave it on Monday. We will have individuals working at the plant. They'll be able to get into the plant to keep the plant up and operational over those two days. It's just no vehicular traffic can go over the railroad crossing at that time. The Senior Fall Festival, we held on Wednesday, November twentieth, from nine AM to twelve PM at the John O'Leary Adult Community Center. Stay tuned for more information as the date comes closer. And finally, Parks and Recreation Logo Design Contest. The Parks and Recreation Department needs your help to design a new logo. The current logo was first introduced in two thousand fourteen, and since that time, the department has grown in both size and scope of what we offer in Merrimack residents. Our feeling is the existing logo no longer represents what they all do in Parks and Rec. This is where we need you. The residents come in, we are looking for your help to designing a new Parks and Rec Department logo, which will be visible on our website, social media pages, documents, apparel, banners, and other related offerings. If your logo design is chosen from the entries submitted, you'll be locally recognized in the print and on social media, presented with a fifty-dollar gift card, receive a twenty-five-dollar Parks and Recreation gift certificate, and a T-shirt with your new logo on it. If you're interested, please visit www.merrimackparksandrec.org. That's www.merrimackparksandrec.org. The deadline to submit your design is November first. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. All right, comments from the press and public? If anybody would like to address the council, they can step over to the table or the mic. And seeing none, I want to let you know also McKenzie's been excused from this evening. I forgot to mention that, of course. Resignations, so we have a resignation tonight of Lynn Christensen from the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and it's one of the many things she's done, and she's pulling back now, it sounds like. So do we need a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved with regret, accept the resignation?
Motion by Nancy Harrington and seconded by Jennifer.
I should say with regret and appreciation.
And appreciation, yes. Well, we, so we'll call a question on the motion. All those in favor, motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, six zero zero. And she probably has a stack of these certificates, I think, at this point. But the council's got a certificate for her. It's presented to Lynn Christensen in recognition of your years of service as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. In recognition of your dedication and commitment to public service during your appointment as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, your service and devotion to the Zoning Board of Adjustment has had a valuable effect upon this community. We wish to extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty January two thousand fifteen to September two thousand twenty-four. So, yes, she's done a lot of things over the years. All right, next, we have an appointment with the Town Center Committee Chairman Nelson Disco. Per Merrimack Charter, Article Six, Section Six, at least annually, there should be a review with the Town Center Committee. The agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know about or could act upon. Hi, Nelson.
Hi, Billy. Hi, board. He's going to teach me how to turn this on.
I'm going to come out and get it all set.
You did. All right, Nelson. Thank you. Okay, thank you for this opportunity, ladies and gentlemen.
Is your mic, is your mic on, Nelson? Your microphone? Bring it closer, one of the two.
I thank you for this opportunity. Does that come through?
Yeah.
That's better.
Thank you.
Thank you, I didn't notice that. I thank you for this opportunity to give my once-a-year short notice of what we've done the past year on the Town Center Committee. The, if I can, oh, yes, I remember now. I can remember which of these buttons to pull, push.
That'll do.
There. Okay. Committee was formed in two thousand and nine, and it was based on recommendations that were made from the ITRAC study. The ITRAC study was done for the town of Merrimack under the aegis of the Town Council, and the ITRAC Committee was charged to look at the town center. There's always been a question in Merrimack about where's the center of town? I think it's maybe still there, but we're getting there. The, so the council chartered a NRPC, it's National Regional Planning Commission, to do a study of where the center is and what should be done to make it more of a center. And as a result of that, we, the council appointed, after the study was done with its recommendations, the council appointed a committee to follow on. It's called the Town Center Committee, and that's what we're here to talk about today. Our current membership is listed here. I won't read them all. Many of them have been with the committee since its founding in two thousand nine. We have had two resignations this year. One, Karen Kontos, who made substantial contributions to the committee, has resigned. And Jennifer also, but she went on to hire, hire things. So that's our current, we currently have two openings on the board. One of them should come from the library, and I have spoken to them about it, and I think they're working on it. Otherwise, we have an opening. If anyone is interested in membership on the Town Center Committee, we'd like to have them. The big event of this year was the completion of the South Eagan River Trail, which is a hiking trail that follows the South Eagan River from Watson Park all the way up to Wildcat Falls, and continues on and then it comes out at Courier Road in the other side, on this side of the river. This trail, we had a formal ribbon cutting. I have a piece of ribbon here. Anybody would like to see it? And we had a formal opening of it on the twenty-sixth of September, and it was well-attended, so many of you were able to attend, and we're happy to see you. I think a lot of credit goes to the Town Council for having initiated this thing, this and started it. This is, this, South Eagan River Trail is just one piece of our town center. There's still some gaps in the sidewalks that we'll talk about later, but these, the piece that's done is significant, and it has attracted a large number of people. We have a counter out there. Before it opened, and one day, we had over two hundred people who walked it just to see, mostly out of curiosity, but to see what it was like. So it's been a, it's been a great thing for the town of Merrimack, I think, and people coming from out of town even to come and look at it because it's pretty well, the South Eagan River is pretty well-known through this part of New Hampshire. The, going beyond that, we next looked at, during the past year, this is, I'm trying to summarize a year's worth of work by the Town Center Committee. So we did do other things. We completed the plan for completion of sidewalks. There are gaps in the sidewalks still. We can talk about them specifically as we go along. But the, the big thing is the, there's several projects in between along our Route Three, and the main piece that's missing still is the connection of the, to the footbridge that goes across the South Eagan River. And that's still on our priority list, although it, everything on the priority list almost is out in two thousand thirty-five, which is a little beyond, beyond many of our expectations. Plan, we've worked with a, oh, yes, well, speaking of links, there are some key links that we need to talk about tonight. One of them is the link between the Twin Bridge, the new Twin Bridge Apartments, and the trailhead on Twin Bridge Park that ends on Twin Bridge Road. And there's just a short piece there that when if it was completed, we would have a trail that would go from Tractor Supply to Rite Aid almost. It's almost possible to walk it. But it needs a few other pieces too. But that's, that was a key piece, and we had an opportunity this year to get it done at a fairly low price, and, but the money wasn't available, so we weren't able to take advantage of it. We still have plans for the sidewalk from Frazier Square to Merrimack three sixty. That goes beyond the scope of the Town Center Committee, but it is a, it talks about a, oh, yeah, that's what I should do. Should upgrade this. Yeah, yeah, Frazier Square to three sixty now. And that, that is, has been moved up in priorities by the state within a funded plan for two thousand thirty-two. We also reviewed our pedestrian projects. I won't, the other projects that are missing are listed here. I did not go into any detail on them. This is the same as last year, the same priority list that we had a year ago. So we haven't changed our priorities at all. But there's a listing of twelve elements of the Town Center Committee sidewalks, the Town Center sidewalks that we want to build, and those are listed there. Key among these is, has just come up, has been the Church Street discontinuance. I talked about that a year ago. We are still hoping to get that included as part of the reconstruction of the Route Three Babusick Brook Bridge. And we had hoped to get it in there. Dawn's going to talk more about that later today, so I won't, I won't go into it. She's got the latest details. But it looks like we may have a little problem there in getting it done in a timely way so that at least we can take advantage of the state's construction and funding of a sidewalk between the library and Wire Road, which is a key element of our plans. Also, we've had a representative from the NRPC, Tyrone Borlitz. He is also heading up for the NRPC. He's doing a region-wide bicycle path analysis, and he has counters, where he puts counters at various places where they count the bicycles, but it can also count pedestrians. That's where we got the two hundred number for the, before the opening of the trail. So we're going to start keeping track of how many people use our trails, and we'll see where, maybe it'll influence where we put future monies. I don't know. The public outreach is part of our work. We have been relying mostly on information booths. This year, we had one at the Winter Carnival. We did not do the Fourth of July because we were short of people. We just didn't have enough people to staff it. But our intent is to continue to interact with the citizens of the town and let them know what the Town Center Committee is doing or trying to do. And we want them to, and we see very favorable comments. Everybody who talks to us says, "Oh, what a good idea." And I said, "Well, tell your Town Council members," because they, they have made it happen so far, and hopefully we'll continue. So also, the other ways we reach out is through the Media Development Division. Nicholas LaValle, who is one of our members of the committee, he has put up Facebook pages, and he has now got over seven hundred followers on the Facebook page. And furthermore, he's got some interesting videos that are available on the Facebook, on the town Facebook page, which shows a little bit of the ceremonies regarding the ribbon cutting, groundbreaking and ribbon cutting and so on for the South Eagan River Trail. But he, together with the, with the Historical Society, has been very interested in filming what we're doing, and they filmed some of the work that was done on the Chamberlain Bridge, which is an historic bridge with considerable value to the town and weaving in with the town history. They've got, let me see, yeah, it's now on Merrimack TV app is another source. We're going to that on the Merrimack, on the channel, Merrimack. So Safe Roots to School is part of our charter. The missing link of sidewalk there is along O'Gara Drive. There's a section of O'Gara Drive that's missing. It was included in one of the versions of the, the school district, as you know, is trying to rebuild or build a proper SAU center, and there's been a couple of attempts, but it hasn't passed the voters yet. And so that's holding up that piece of sidewalk. We do hold the Virtual Walk to School Day, which is held November ninth this year, which is a nationwide thing where kids are encouraged to walk to school for one day.
Uphill.
And it's all flat. It's not uphill both ways.
In the snow, yeah.
For the, for next year, the year coming up, we plan to continue to work with the SAU to implement that new center that they want to build around the high school, and depending on voter support. We're going to continue to work with the TC, the Town Center Facebook page.
Switch your, switch your digital.
Pardon?
Do you, advance your page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, no problem.
Sorry about that. I see, I'm reading it off of here, and I shouldn't be reading it there. This is, okay, so, where were we? Let's see, well, we're continuing our work with information booths is the plan. We'll be supporting Fourth of July if we can, or at least the Winter Carnival if it's not too cold and windy. We've been coordinating with the DPW in preparing capital improvement plans for pedestrian ways. As I said, as I mentioned earlier, there were, there are four or five key pieces that are missing from the sidewalk network to make it really work as a, as a network where you can go from one place to another by foot. And so we've been working with DPW on that. DPW's been very supportive of this project. They've helped a great deal getting TAP grants, and we now have an announcement from the NRPC that there's another round of TAP grants that are going to become available shortly. And so we're encouraged to put something in for that, although we have done so already for the, for the last decade. The TAP grants we asked for, they included the sidewalk from the library to the Babusick, Babusick Lake Road overpass, which will be replaced this year, and we'll get as much of that done by the state as we can, and then there'll be a piece that the town will have to, have to foot the bill for. So that's, that's one of the key ones coming up. That, of course, the Church Street. And we'll, we're expecting, maybe we'll be working on a town, updated Town Master Plan this year. I don't know if that's going forward or not. It'll be on the, it'll be in, maybe in the budget for next year, in which case, the Town Center Committee would like to participate to the extent that we keep our, our ideas in the forefront of that. We're continuing to ask your help, the council. Yeah, recommendations to you for this year is to continue to ask for help in various projects. If we do only one piece a year, we'd be amazing. We'd, we'd be finished in no time. But we, we need to continue to add the little pieces that are missing, and I hope we can do some of that this year. The big work that'll be done near term that we've got really planned, now that the South Eagan River Hiking Trail is finished, will be the construction of the Wire Road intersection and Babusick Brook Bridge on Route Three. That's one project now. It's planned to begin construction in two thousand twenty-six, which is not very far away, it really isn't. And this year is all design work that's going on right now with that. And included in that, of course, is the, is the piece of sidewalk between the library and Wire Road, and the Church Street intersection is an issue there. So, but Dawn will talk about that. I'm not going to talk about. The committee recommends continuing to budget funding annually to implement small projects to complete, toward completing the ITRAC goals. The Twin Bridge Road, the library to the police station, the crosswalks east side of Daniel Webster Highway, and the Twin Bridge Road to three sixty Common, of course, would be a good thing to have. The major issues that are facing us right now is the Church Street dead end and continuing to implement the plan that we have. So that's our goals for the near term. I've got some suggestions for, if you're looking for other things to, information. I would also recommend, I didn't get it on here, is the latest links that Nicholas LaValle has provided us linking to the construction work that we've done already and hopefully continue to do. So I think that pretty much wraps up where I do, where I am. Our next is questions and comments. It's your turn.
Yeah, you had a lot accomplished this year.
We did. It was a very good year, a very good year. But you guys should take the credit and pat yourselves on the back for having stuck with it. I know there were some obstacles. There were times that could have turned back, maybe, said this has gotten out of hand. It costed way more than we originally started to plan.
We got a little deep, and turning back started to become a little more difficult.
Yeah, the more invested we became.
Well, thank you for sticking there anyway. I think, long-term, you'll be glad you did. And if you look at the town when you leave it, it's better because of it.
It's a nice project. It sure, it came out really nicely. Does anybody have any questions, or Tom?
So Nelson, thank you for your summary, and especially for your continued effort on the South Eagan River Trail because that thing might have died about six times at least on the last twelve years or whatever it's been. You were talking about we needed to work on little pieces of sidewalk to finish this up, and if we could do one a year. Do you have any idea what the cost of each little piece might be on average? Are we talking ten or twenty thousand? Are we talking a hundred thousand, or we, do we have any idea?
Unfortunately, I have to tell you, it's more in the hundred thousand category. We had one piece that we could have gotten for a little over fifty thousand, which was the piece between the trailhead on, on.
On Twin Bridge.
At Twin Bridge Park. At Twin Bridge Park and the new apartments that have just been built. And we went to the contractor who was building the Twin Bridge Apartments there. I think they're called Affordable, that Affordable Housing Project. And we tried to get a price in conjunction with what he was doing. But we didn't have the money even to do that. So that, that was the least expensive one. And I'm sorry to say, well, you know, it gets into more than just a path. These sidewalks need granite curbs. They interfere with drainage in some cases, so the drainage gets tied in with it. And those things just jack the price up. So I wish I could tell you, we could do some little, little cheap ones.
Yeah, I wish I could too. I guess the question is asked partly for the public because, I mean, it sounds great that if we worked on these little pieces, we could put this whole thing together in six years or something like that. But every time we try to go into it, the cost that you're just talking about is a struggle. And then the cost of maintenance of those sidewalks, because if you build a sidewalk, now you've got to maintain it through the winter and things like that. So all those costs add up and make it a little bit more complicated than just putting in sidewalks. But I definitely appreciate your, your approach and your attempts. And I just wanted to make clear that we're trying, but there's only so many funds.
Okay, well, keep us in mind. Every once in a while, opportunities come along. I know we had a little opportunity last year. I don't know where that money went, but I'm sure it's gone.
Not yet.
It will be.
Not yet.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Nelson.
Oh, I figured, yeah.
Well, thank you very much, Nelson. Make sure the committee knows that we appreciate it and I'll pass that on too. But already no public hearings. Updates from our legislative delegation. I don't see anybody here, but Nancy?
Sure. Today was veto day in the House. And one of the bills that was important to me, because I wrote it, but also really important to our town because it would have benefited us greatly, was House Bill 1415, which was a PFAS facility liability bill. And it would have required that any PFAS facility, which was defined in the bill, that contaminated groundwater in excess of 100 parts per trillion would have to basically clean up their mess. It's a clean up your mess bill is really what it was. And it, I mean, the bill, I say it was a good bill, not because I wrote it, but because it passed both committees with full unanimous support. It passed the full House on a voice vote. It passed the full Senate on a voice vote on consent. Unfortunately, the BIA did not want that bill to pass. And at their behest, the governor did not sign it. He had, his rationale was that it conflicted now with a bill that he just signed the same day. So it didn't conflict till he signed the other bill. And that bill's much less restrictive. I'm a co-sponsor of that one too, so it wasn't like, you know, I didn't think that was a good bill, but it was amended to, to some, some levels that weren't 10,000 parts per trillion, which were way different than what we were requesting. Anyway, today was the, the vote and the, let's see, the, in the House, the, the... We actually overturned the veto in the House. But of course, that doesn't really mean anything until it also happens in the Senate. And it was 289 Democrats and Republicans were in favor of overturning the veto. And 38 Republicans opposed overturning the veto. And it went to the Senate and was not overturned. So unfortunately, we lost, but I will bring back that part of the bill that we still really need. And I'm hoping for support. We had it this time. I'm hoping that, that we can do it again. So it was a short day and conquered. And that's it.
Thank you very much. All right, Paul, Town Manager's report?
Thank you. I just want to give the council an update on the sound study. We've reached out to a couple vendors on Effie Ever Turnpike in the areas that Rosemary Run came and talked to you last meeting about. We reached, we reached out to vendors. We were waiting responses as of this afternoon. Dawn did get a response from one vendor. They gave her another vendor from Massachusetts who does, who does this type of work. And she'll be reaching out to them tomorrow to see how much something like that would have cost. Just want to let the council know, we are still working on it. We're just, it isn't any old person who can go out there and do that kind of work. So we're, we're working on getting our own independent verification for that and how much it would be cost and bring that back to the council before we move forward.
It'd be good to let the leaves fall off anyhow.
Yes.
Where you get real clear reading on the most opportune time.
Yes, Councilor Koenig.
Can you even do a noise study during construction? I mean, does that make sense?
The area where they are going to be, that's one of the questions we have for them. But it's the area where it's really, it's right outside the construction zone. So I do not know that because they're on the southerly side of Exit 12 is where we're looking at and then further down as well.
Okay, so where they haven't started?
Where they haven't started the construction. I think we can, we can do some, some sound there. I spoke to Senator Riccardi?
Richard.
Riccardi on Bedford, in Bedford. I was at a meeting in Bedford and I'll explain that, but I talked to her too. And she was able to get some sound barriers put in in Bedford. And basically, they were mounds of, you know, mounds and things of that sort. So I talked to her a little bit more about that. I know that she has another...
Burnes?
Burnes and stuff, but sound barriers helped out. And she has another bill, she's hoping if she gets reelected, that will go forward in this cycle. So for sound, sound burnes and sound walls and things of that sort. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out.
It would be more than just Bedford.
Yeah, it would be, it would be along the, the whole highway stretch. But I talked to her a little bit about that. So hopefully she gets reelected. She is a lady of her word. She's always been a lady of her word. Whenever I talk to her, she tells me like it is and she follows through with it. So hopefully she'll get reelected and I'll be happy to see what kind of bill she puts forward. Speaking of Bedford, Bedford is looking to expand the Route 3 portion in their neck of the woods from Exit 13, basically, down to Lowe's. It's the one lane stretcher road that goes between Exit 13 and, and the Lowe's complex there. They have money set aside in the 10-year plan. Construction is out in '26 and '27. They have put together a committee to review this. I got a call from the state of New Hampshire asking me if I would like to sit on the committee. I said, yes, I would very much so. Because if they push traffic through that area, it's still going to bottleneck when you come on the Merrimack side and looking at what, what are they doing? And how are they going to move traffic from the Bedford area of Lowe's to Exit 13 if it's all two lanes both ways? So that's going to move traffic that much faster to the Merrimack Town Line? What is that going to do with Exit 13? How's that going to impact the traffic coming off the Turnpike? Once the Turnpike is expanded, hopefully the people will go up all the way to Exit 13 to get off, to go through Bedford instead of getting off at Exit 12 or Exit 10 to come through Merrimack to go to Bedford. So I'm on that committee. Our first meeting is going to be in November to look at some, some drawings that they have set aside. But that's something that's going on in the 10-year plan. And it was nice of DOT to reach out and actually include Merrimack this time instead of just saying, okay, this is what we're doing. Merrimack, have a nice day. So at least I'll have some understand of what they're doing and how they're going to try to push the traffic. One thing that was said in the briefing on Tuesday night was they're looking 100 feet wide in the road. So it would be 100 feet across in some areas with turn lanes. That's a lot of land.
That's a lot of land.
That's a lot of land to be taken. Most of, most of the stretch in that area, Bedford has about 66 feet that they can go on either side right away, making that 100. That's, that's a lot of land that should be taken over to do that. And it's going to be two lanes both ways, but then turning lanes and things of that sort as well. So we'll see how the final design plays out. But that was what was presented as a sketch, so.
And you're talking about from the, from the Merrimack River Bridge crossing is 13, right?
Yeah, Exit 13, yes.
Up to Lowe's?
Up to Lowe's, yes.
Okay. You said down to Lowe's and I was having a hard time getting myself...
Up to Lowe's. Depends which way you're going.
Yeah.
It's from, it's basically, I think, technologically Drive in Bedford up to Hawthorne Drive in Bedford, those two intersections. So that's between Lowe's and Exit 13.
And Exit 13, okay. Thank you.
It's been widened, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody all set?
Oh, one other thing is, so people understand, this has been in the works since like 2005, '06. So this was in the works before they did the Exit 13 off-ramp. So this has been in the works for a while that they, Bedford's been trying to get this done. So we'll see what, what happens.
So your concern is that it might increase traffic in Merrimack? I mean, with the Exit 13...
There'll be, I'm just, my concern is, you know how backed up Bedford Road at the Walgreens intersection gets, Bedford Road and DW, how backed up that gets? Now that they're pushing traffic that much faster through the area, how much further back is, how much backed up is that going to get in that area? Because they're pushing the traffic now. More people might have not have been taking that route to come this way. Now they're going to start taking that route.
Yeah, but, okay. It seems to me they won't take that route unless they want to go to some business that's being developed in that area, in which case it shouldn't be a problem at all. They'll either jump on the highway at 13 or north of Lowe's.
Well, hoping that's what they would do.
Yeah.
It's, they did traffic counts at 16, 17,000 cars a day.
Up there, yeah.
So, you know, if, I'm sure most of those are already taken through Merrimack. But just in case, yeah, just to see what it's like with it, with the traffic.
Certainly during the construction, they'd come through Merrimack. But during the construction of the Effie Everett. But once, I think, once that's completed, I can't imagine people coming through Merrimack.
I'd hope that people would stay on the highway. The only, the only issue with that is that they would get off at Exit 13 and come down because we don't have a southbound Exit 12 entrance into Merrimack. So they would have to go from 13 all the way down to 11 if they wanted to come to Merrimack. So that's why I see those people using that road, which hopefully they're currently using it. So just something to keep an eye on for traffic.
All right, thanks, Paul. We have no consent agenda. First item under Old Business, the council considered the renewal of the four-year agreement between the Town of Merrimack and the Merrimack Youth Association. There were a couple of changes that we had requested and I think those were all set.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I provided an updated contract with the changes that were requested. Number, the first change was, would be number one, a four-year deal. And number, item number two, provided there is enough participation in adult volunteerism to support such a program. This was a request from the MYA. From them. I just, that's where it would be included. The request for people at home was that, we talked about these changes at the last meeting. The council asked me to put them into the document so they can actually see where they would be in the document. The next one is number four, which was the bookkeeper. They will provide a bookkeeper to perform accounting functions for all programs listed in item two. That way, by saying the word provide, they could either have a volunteer do it or they could pay for those services. But they will be providing bookkeeping services, which is something that we really want. And they're, they want to now that they've seen the benefit of it. And then number six was the, really what was added there was by mutual agreement, the town will allow additional advertising at Reed Ferry Field and Bice Field only after such advertising signs are approved by the Town Council. So we opened up the door for them to be able to advertise there. However, they got to come back because they didn't have specific signs at the time and the contract says, signs as of the date of the contract. So that gave them the opportunity to come back at a later date to the Town Council with your approval. Because the big thing was that batting cage, pitching cage. If they put a sign, that's a pretty long sign versus a smaller sign. I think that was a concern of the council, so we put that in there. And then the last item, I added item number nine. The Town Council designated Town Manager to act on their behalf as it relates to maintenance of fields and issues that arise with said maintenance. That is something that we, we wanted to switch over because it kind of, we were crossing paths here a little bit with, the contract is between the Town Council and the MYA. However, the maintenance of the field is up, falls underneath Town Manager's purview. Legal, I ran this by legal and that's what they suggested we put in the contract for, for that, to, to allow the switch over, to say, hey, the Town Manager is responsible for maintenance. We're responsible for everything else.
And you're going to fix the typo?
Yeah, that's what I was wanting.
To act instead of at act?
Oh, I didn't catch that one. I saw issues, which you've said issues and I, you added a singular.
Oh, and issues that arise, yeah.
And he read it as plural.
Issues, yes.
And Town Manager to act?
Act, act, at act.
When I read that paragraph, I didn't see your correction, so.
Yeah, we, we can make those changes on there.
I was, okay. Can we go back real quick to number four?
Yes.
You, you very specifically say listed an item two. What if they brought in pickleball or something like that? Should they include that as well or, or is that covered by any, any programs that they can support?
It says any other recreational programs which generate significant amount of interest on the part of Merrimack youth residents.
But listed in item two could technically mean if it's not written out.
Right.
I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking you could just leave off listed in item two, but that might leave them open to some other idea of what a program is too that they don't want to have to cover, right?
Covered by section two. What if it's just covered by section two?
That would probably be better than listed.
Right, so we can say programs covered.
In item two.
In item two, which would be anything that they expand in because they have...
Yeah, we can change that to covered.
Thank you.
That's it for change. Is there any, yeah, Nancy, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion, please.
Absolutely.
Doesn't seem to be any more questions. I'd like to approve the renewal of the proposed four-year agreement between the Town of Merrimack and the Merrimack Youth Association.
Second. Motion by Nancy Harrington.
Oh, and designate the Town Manager to send anything, all unnecessary, necessary documentation.
Thank you both, thank you. Second, motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Nancy Murphy. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
And of course, with the edits that were made tonight.
As revised, you have a right to?
Good, thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, under Old Business, the council reviewed the building department's revised code enforcement and inspection fee schedule. There were a few things noticed that had to be kind of corrected.
After the September 12th meeting, when we were getting, writing down the permits and actually getting them ready to be installed for January 1st, we noticed that inadvertently the commercial permit application and the permit was a little bit less. So if you had a commercial vendor, they were actually going to pay less than a residential vendor for a renovation permit. So we changed everything to say 68 cents per square foot in the commercial area. And then there were some minor changes that were highlighted underneath heating conversion from natural gas to propane. And then heating conversion for mechanical permits, temporary office construction trailers. And then, of course, some small languages such as each or test pits. Also that was written. And then underneath sewer, there's a sewer inspection fee of $75. And then there's also the sewer connection fee, which goes through wastewater that is based on water volume.
Which is a previous...
Which is also, which is a previous policy and is actually in a different ordinance that spells that out of what that will be.
So Paul, is blue something we, we agreed to on the 12th or is that...
No, blue was, when we were cleaning it up, we, we just started, blue is additional.
So why is the heat conversion more than the other mechanical permits?
We received that, do we know why, Sharon? That was something that Rick in chief?
I don't have an explanation.
I think for residential, we could actually dock that down to seventy-five dollars with the rest of them. I think what happened was that would number, the hundred came over from the commercial. Cause commercial was a hundred dollars. And then I think when they brought it forward, we said, well, what about residential? I think they just brought the hundred forward. I think it should be seventy-five.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so also on the, um, on the commercial side, we would like to mirror the language that says heat conversion, natural gas or liquid propane gas or oil. In the, um, mechanical permit underneath the commercial as well, to copy the language one hundred percent. So they both read the same.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna ask about that.
Yep, so they would be the same.
Okay. I only ask because I just did one of those a year ago. Just curious.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, that was probably, like I said, it was like the hundred dollars was just carried over from...
Okay, thank you.
Talking about it. And like I said, these will all go in effect January first.
Does anybody have any questions?
Make a motion, please. Um, move to approve the building department's revised code of enforcement and inspection fee schedule, um, as amended, uh...
Tonight.
With the, as amended tonight, yes. Thank you.
Effective January one. Do you need that?
Effective January one.
Effective the first of January twenty twenty-five.
Second.
See none? I'll call for question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, number three under old business. The council to be presented with an update on the current financial breakdown and anticipated future requests. As well as the public works department's request to combine the US Route Three Bridge and Wire Road project and the, and the closure of Church Street project.
That was a mouthful.
So, right now, we got more information from the state about the, the bridge and the Wire Road project. The state is going to be, we are combining those two projects together. Um, we got an additional, Dawn will speak to it, additional costs associated with it. And at the last meeting when we were talking about the Church Street closure, um, the council asked, um, for us to start looking at alternatives with designs and things of that sort. And Dawn then went back to the state and she'll update you on that as well. Um, it was not a favorable response from the state on paying for it. So Dawn will update you as well with some of the costs that she got, quote she got.
Good evening. Well, between your introduction and Nelson's wonderful introduction, I don't need to do my presentation. Um, and I did wanna thank Nelson for doing the ribbon cutting at the ceremony. He did a wonderful job. And if it hadn't been for him, that trail might not have been as wonderful as it actually is. I just wanna thank him. All right, well, we'll kinda break down the Wire Road, um, and Babusick Brook Bridge, uh, project. So, as you know, there were two different projects a number of years ago. But you'll see in this overall, this is Babusick Lake Road. Um, this is Bab, uh, Route Three. This is Church Street coming up through here. We actually got the state to do sidewalks on both sides of the road, not just one. Um, so that actually knocked off two on the list, or will knock off two that's on Nelson's list. Then we come up to the Wire Road intersection and we had agreed, and I've been bringing this forward to you. But the part that's been missing is the financial part. They hadn't put that all together. We had permission to go ahead to combine them, but they hadn't actually done the paperwork yet, so. So anyway, this is the intersection and we had chosen to do the lights at this intersection, which they're going forward with. We've completed, we're working through our preliminary. We're about ready to enter into our final phase of the design part. This area right here is where the bridge is gonna be. You can see the closeness between it. Our project manager, when we started over, we were working on this bridge. And he said, well, you've got another project coming up in about five years. It doesn't make any sense to do them separately. We really need to bring them together because they influence one another. So they do indeed very much influence one. Um, so that ended up making this bridge a couple of feet wider because of the intersection, cause of the curvature and the slopes and the grades out there. And so it's good that we're blending everything together. One thing we were required to do is have two different engineers. So I'm working with two different engineering companies to bring this all together. And our state, um, rep is excellent and he has been working very hard to make sure that we all mesh together. Unfortunately, we were supposed to go out to bid this September. Um, things have, we, we're ending up going out next September instead. So we're gonna be delayed a year. We're gonna start construction in twenty twenty-five. We're now gonna start construction in twenty twenty-six. So, let's get rid of that part.
For the entire project?
Yes, the entire project from Babusick Lake Road all the way to, down to Twin Bridge Road. That whole thing. And that'll be in conjunction with the state doing their two bridges going over Babusick Lake Road and Wire Road. So it'll be very interesting down here.
And that's why, do you think that's why it's that delayed?
No, no, it was on, um, our engineers because we were trying to bring the Wire Road up five years, advance it really quick. And we didn't quite make all of the things we needed to at that point. So it wasn't on them, it was on us. So this is a presentation, um, that our representative, DOT representative, gave to the financial committee in Concord, uh, the end of September. So I thought that very appropriate for coming here. So this shows the outline of the project itself. Gave a couple pictures for it. Can we move forward? There we go. He did a little bit of background, which I just went through the two projects, um, and how it all came about to be. This is the actual bridge project. It's a hundred and twenty feet span. Uh, this is the brook that's going underneath and it will be able to flow more than what it's doing now. So it'll reduce the hundred-year flow, flood that's in the back that you don't know. Between here and Bedford Road, um, there's still an issue. And this would help to alleviate some of that.
That, that bridge, this bridge, for those that don't know, is the last bridge in the line.
The very last.
The last, very last bridge. And with the widening of the FE Everett turnpike, the choke point underneath the turnpike now will also alleviate it. So doing this bridge at this time will help alleviate...
All the flood situations.
Basically, um, Wire Road, all the way down Bedford Road, Law Bridge Road.
Lot of bridges.
Then this is the last bridge before it goes out to the Merrimack.
So the area in gray with the, um, is the Route Three. Um, the area in yellow is gonna be the bridge and then the river crossing. We are going to do a bypass, um, construct a temporary bridge that's in red, two lanes, so we'll keep the traffic flowing. We tried all kinds of different options all over the place. It wasn't working. So we just bit the bullet and went with the bypass. Uh, this is the Wire Road intersection. You can see this is what it is today. This is what it will be. And then here it is with the lighting that we will, that I came before you, um, was it earlier this year? I think it was earlier this year. When you put all of this together, um, which they did, it's a eleven million dollar project.
As of now.
Yeah, well, I'm not quite done. This was as of the beginning of the year. Because I told you they hadn't given us our paperwork. So one of my reasons for coming tonight is we need to give the town manager approval to be able to sign the paperwork to continue this project. One thing I didn't cost out was our twenty percent, but...
It's easy math.
Yeah, it's easy. I, I just didn't do it for tonight. I apologize. I should've. So you asked about what's coming. Well, with the preliminary design, we've now, they've developed some more costs. So these are some of the different costs that they've come up with. And again, a whole lot of numbers. Here's the important one. So the, today's update is twelve million, five hundred and eighty-five. Uh, you won't get paperwork for that. They're going to just carry that and move forward. But they do need to have the original paperwork signed to be able to combine these two together. So that's what I'm here tonight to ask you to do. And if you have any questions on that part of this presentation, let me know.
So, so what's the impact of that increase? Is that cost Merrimack has to bear a portion of?
No, it's still eighty, twenty.
It's still eighty, twenty?
Yes.
So of the two million increase, we still have eighty, twenty percent?
Yes, one point five million, but...
Huh?
One point five million increase, technically.
Okay.
But if this isn't gonna start until twenty-six, we can, we can expect it will have gone up more by that time.
I would suspect.
Yeah.
And they don't do one of these every time they give, give approval. They only do these occasionally. So, um, I think our original, when we combined it, was eight million when the two actually came together.
It'll be fifteen million by the time it sets.
So what's the difference between this promis and con? What, what do those mean?
Um...
A current promis-con budget?
Construction, it's the construction budgets.
Okay, what's P R O M I S?
Good question. Uh, that was the original, actually eight point eight, that was the original, uh, when they came together.
But down below you have a current P R O M I S, but it doesn't say construction. It just says...
Right, so they, they're, that's the current number is eleven million right now, until they approve the twelve point five.
We'll, we'll get you a definition of promis and see what it is.
I don't, I don't have their acronyms all.
So I guess I'm lost. The, you originally came in at eight point eight. Something went to ten point three and that's the construction of this whole project? So the delta is one point five?
No, so the original when we brought them together was eight point eight.
All right.
There was an increase along the way and it brought it up to ten point three.
Okay.
Now where they're asking for an additional one point five with all of those numbers I had just showed you. And it brings it from the eleven to twelve point five.
Okay. I was trying to figure out which numbers added up to which numbers.
That's the way the nu, I know how the numbers add up.
So you need a motion to give approval for the town manager to sign for these projects?
Yes.
For combining the projects and all the documents related to it.
Right.
Nancy?
Thank you. Just, did, did the delay that we're responsible for, is that what caused the...
No.
Up to the, so what, what was that for? Do we know what the...
They had to increase the bridge size by a couple of feet, so that was three million. I mean, there's a lot more than just saying, oh, I'm gonna make it two feet wider on each side. Uh, you've got all the unders, everything that goes along with it. Uh, we put the sidewalk on both sides with all the drainage, which needs to be updated. Miscellaneous things, um, coffer dams and mobilization and whatnot, it got increased. Cause the costs have increased, been increasing. And then there's a contingency cost. So these were all the increases that they...
Oh, we went from eight to ten.
Were working on, yeah.
Paul, were the, our twenty percent?
Makes sense.
With the growth and expected growth for the future, you're...
Our, our twenty percent is over two million dollars.
Right, but are you, we're, we're all set with that?
We're, it was a tough pill to swallow. Um, but, uh, we have to look at the CIP and, and go forward. Um, we're on, we were, we were ready to fund it at the ten million.
Right.
So the one point five is just maybe, we'll have to look at increasing that capital reserve fund a little bit in the next couple of years to help come up with the difference. The opt, the other option is, is that you don't do Wire Road and you just do the bridge. But it's kinda, it defeats the purpose of, of what the council wanted at that time, you know? Still got the sidewalks going in. We still have everything else.
It's actually four, four projects. If you wanna look at it that way, it's the bridge, the intersection and hu, and the sidewalks on both sides. Cause they weren't gonna do sidewalks going all the way down.
You know, really, really it's...
And that first number, those weren't included in that first number?
Sorry, I thought I had shut off.
I forgot to remind you, didn't I?
No, I thought I shut off.
So, so i, is there, is there some news about Church Street that's part of this before we...
There, there will, but I didn't know whether you wanted to deal with this in two separate, they're two separate...
There, there is some news with Church Street and, and...
Does the news with Church Street contain a dollar sign?
No.
Not, yes, it does, but it's not a split dollar sign.
Trust me.
It's not a what?
It's not split. It's not an eighty, twenty. It's a hundred percent town of Merrimack.
I'm just wondering whether we should cover that before we decide what we're doing with this.
There, there isn't, uh, Dawn doesn't have a steadfast dollar for you yet because no designs have been done. Because the estimates we got for designs, once the state said they're not gonna do the eighty, twenty. I said, we gotta bring that back to the council and see if they, what they would like to do. Is it as simple as we're just closing the road? We're gonna put some concrete barriers up at the top of the road? Regrade the road and leave it at that? So...
Should we have that conversation before a decision on this or...
It's up to the council. You know, I think, I think it's wise that they get the full picture.
Well, they're not related in terms of money.
No, but it, it, it could be because if we decide not to close it, it affects that sidewalk component.
Well, not by much.
Not by much.
I mean, just the length of the road. Right, you can only walk across a road.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right.
You can't, you can't get a sidewalk across Church Street.
Right, with the drive there.
With the way the driveway is set up, the slope for handicapped, you cannot get a, you cannot get a sidewalk through there. Because you could do a sidewalk before it and after it, but that road, you'd have to bring the people out into DW where it's flat and then back in. Dawn can explain this better than I can.
Because it's sloped.
Because of the slope. It's, it's X degree slope and we're well above. Dawn can explain it better than I can.
I didn't bring the profile with me tonight.
That's what, that's what she does. I just know from, from explanations, the slope is, is too significant of to put, you have to put a sidewalk in on that road to leave that road open.
So we'll run through the Church Street and then, um, here's a aerial of the whole area. Um, Babusick Lake is down along the bottom. Route Three is off on the right side. And then Church Street goes from Babusick Lake all the way up and around the church and then down that really steep section. So if you've got a real low car and you go on that road sometimes, you know how it, things bottom out? Well, that's the reason why we have a, um, issue with the sidewalk. The area that we're talking about is this area in green of closing Church Street, which you've seen this before. This is, uh, the concept as far as we have gotten it. It's showing the sidewalk coming through. But this area in green here, we need to be able to cut the banks back in order to get up. And to do that, it's all the way up to where the top of this green is. What I plan to do, um, and Paul's right, the state has said they will not fund Church Street, period. However, they have to fund the part where we're cutting. They have to deal with the slopes. So they will take this part. What I'm gonna try to do with them is to get them to accept by putting a nice fence and some plantings or something at the top. Um, plus putting in some stairs, because that was one of the requests of the abutters. Was to be able to have some stairs coming down so that they could connect Church Street with the new sidewalk. Um, because they, they said the kids come through there already and they make a mess just walking through the loam and whatnot. Um, because they, they said the kids come through there already and they make a mess just walking through the loam and whatnot, and they, it gets really muddy, so. You know, that, I'm gonna ask them now to be able to put in the design, so I'm hoping that the state will then cover that part of it. Anything beyond this point, they will not cover. They will not change Church Street, do a turnaround, look at any analysis, to do extra survey work, to do some concepts up there. We were talking in the order of fifty-five, fifty-four to fifty-five thousand dollars for just the survey and just two concepts, or two or three. I can do that. We now have that survey equipment. I've got, we actually got a grant for the next part of that, another thirty thousand dollars, so I can get the remaining, survey equipment that we'll need. Uh, I don't have that official yet, but I've been told that we will get that along with the camera equipment for wastewater, um, that they, that they need. So that's coming in the pipe. We know that we've got approved for that. I haven't got the paperwork yet, soon to be. But with our new survey equipment, we did, we were able to get last year, we can do some of the survey work, up on Church Street and find out, and draw a plan, draw an existing conditions plan, basically. Excuse me. Um, and then we can start doing concepts. We have that capability. Both of us are PEs, um, we have an engineer on staff, I mean, there's three of us, so we can do our own concepts. I don't need somebody to come in here and to be able to help me do a presentation to you. I might not be as polished sometimes, but you know.
No, I, I appreciate that you have those opportunities.
This was a concept that Kyle had done back in two thousand thirteen, when they originally started talking about shutting down Church Street. So this is the area, it has not changed. The slope hasn't changed, the area hasn't changed, so that area still needs to be regraded. He had put in a, a rough hammerhead at that area, at that time, in this area. Um, there's a couple other thoughts. There's a real light line here, this is where the library comes in. This parking lot over here is changed for this new restaurant that's going in. We'll have to pick out all of that up to be able to, to give you your answers, and I, and I heard, all of you heard all of the abutters, and I'd like to try to work with everyone to try to make this area good. I don't know what that number's gonna be, cause I don't know the extent of the work. I do know we need to do some drainage up here, and whether we can get that drainage, um, in before, I, I, I don't know until we, we run the numbers, do some concepts. So we'll, we'll work on that. Uh, I wanna try to get the surveying done before the snow flies, so that we can have something to, to work on, um, another project. But we can, we can do that through the winter. It's not something we can turn over instantly. We're trying to finish up a lot of other things at this point in time. But we heard everybody, we'd like to be able to have like another meeting with the abutters at some point to be able to, um, let them see what we've done so far and, and have their input again.
So the state is willing to close and do that section right there? Am I understanding that?
This little green section, yes.
They will do. See, I, I never expected that they'd do anything on top. That's why I misunderstood you.
They, they, in order to put that sidewalk in, they have to cut that slope. They can't just stop.
No, no, I know. I thought you were saying they weren't gonna do that until you started the petition. So I misunderstood.
They have to do that. That is part of this project. What they won't do is the turnaround up at the top.
I never expected that they would. That would have been a hail Mary.
They're not even gonna pay for any of those studies up top, or?
No, no, I, I didn't think they would, yeah, so.
I misunderstood you also. So, yeah, so the state is going to make the cut in order to put the sidewalk.
Correct.
Yeah, if we close the road, right.
Yes, but they have to know that we're closing the road before they'll.
So you need that decision this evening?
That should be.
Not closing the road, because that has to go through a public hearing and proper process. Um, and I'm not ready for that, but I do need to know that, um, well, we can do the process, but I can't give you all of your answers. But you need to be able to say at some point, once we go through the process, okay, you, you, we'll close the road, but then I'll have to be working on the design up above, cause there's no way I'm gonna get the design all ready to be able to get the answer of whether or not we'll close the road. And that's kind of the catch twenty-two in that one.
And when does the state, in, in or, in order to have the public hearing and everything we have to have, when, what is the timeframe for that?
The sooner the better, because we need to do, finish the design and get all of the numbers and everything put together, because we don't wanna admit, miss our bid next September.
Right, so, so I, I'm just thinking, we have to have the public, we can't just sit here tonight and say, yes, we're gonna close it, and then have a public hearing. That isn't, wouldn't work in any fashion.
So we have to plan on a public, to do actions on the next page.
Yes, I didn't.
Very good. Sorry I jumped the gun.
That's okay. So we went through.
Oh, I didn't have this in advance, did I?
Yeah, it's a couple of pages.
Yep, so the to-do actions is the last, last things, and I apologize, I put this together at the last.
So my question, cause I always worry about asking a question that I should know the answer to, and it wasn't in the packet, so I'm, I'm clean, I'm okay.
My fault. It's been a very busy, interesting week.
I, I think if they can get out there and do the surveying work, and then they can work on the design for the council over the winter, probably in the spring, come forward and do a, a full public hearing with the new design.
Can you wait that long to know?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
It sounds like we need to.
I'm not sure that I can, cause they.
But, but just remember, we're probably ninety-nine point nine percent, if I read the council right at the last meeting, leaning towards closing Church Street because of the sidewalk. So the question was, we all thought, is what are we gonna do up top? How are we gonna grade that back? And it sounds like the state's paying their eighty percent for that portion of it. It's just, what are we gonna do at the top of the road? The fire department, the chief, Chief DeFranzo said, it doesn't matter if you put a hammerhead in there or not. My fire trucks will get there, my ambulants will get there, we'll, we'll, we'll do what we have to do. If we have to go through the library to get somebody in or out, they'll do that, they'll go the other way, so. Am I correct, right? That's what he said at the meeting for closing it, the police department, they can just turn around or do what they gotta do wi, with, with everything.
But I think the question is the timing, that's all.
I understand that, but I think, to be honest with you, because it's a September deadline on it, we're moving forward with the architect for the design, that portion's already been designed to have that road closed. So.
What are you talking about, September deadline?
To meet, our, we're going out next September for bid.
Next September, okay.
So we have time if we come late winter, early spring, to close the road, to go ahead and move it, because everything is moving with the assumption of the ninety, ninety-five percent that the council said to close the road.
So.
With, with that portion of the, the bid, it's the top of the road, how that's gonna look, that the council, that we're gonna do in house.
But, but, I think, I think, I think, yes, we're just curious, it, we really, in order to say close, I think we owe it to everybody to do that public hearing. If we're trying to get this work that's gonna take a while for you guys to perform, to get it done, can we do that public hearing in advance saying there's a few different potential scenarios? Cause I really think, in order for us to get timing on getting the project going.
We can make a decision to close it four months from now.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
Have a public hearing soon, I'm talking about like within a month or whatever, with the projected, we're gonna close or not, and then project a time.
But like I said, if they can get the survey equipment and do what they need to do up there.
But do we need to do that in order to have a?
They don't, they don't, what I'm trying, I guess, I'm not communicating tonight. I'm saying is that they can come and you can close the road in March, April, and have the public hearing in March and April. That's plenty of time to continue with everything else. That's what I'm saying.
But we, in order, the state, when does the state need to know we're gonna close it so they can do their sidewalk? When does that have to happen?
That has to happen in the bid.
Oh.
Right? Because we're going ahead with the drawings with our.
I can tell them to go ahead as long as we have the understanding, we're gonna be cutting that. I don't have an exact date. I can try to work one out, but as far as I know, they haven't finished the design because they were waiting for an answer.
That's.
That's why we have to have the public hearing sooner. I believe we owe that to the people up on the hill, in particular, I mean, the other people.
If you, I can have a public hearing in November, then, again.
I think we should, just so that way we cover that, you know, because.
If, if the council's okay with not seeing what's gonna be on top of the hill, and it's gonna be a to-be determined for those residents, what it's gonna look like, we can have the public hearing then.
I, and I think that'll work, cause it, it really, we have to have that public hearing before we close it in the state. If they wanna know soon, we should make that happen. And then there's potential alternatives, whatever they might be. In a perfect world, it would be good to have had that, but there's not time. And so I appreciate that.
And I don't feel a need to know right now up on top. That's a to-be determined, like you said.
Okay, we can have it, we'll have the public hearing in Nov- well, we have to send letters out, so it might be December.
Okay, if you, I think that would be the best.
I'd like to be able to send the letters out to the abutters, so that they would have a chance to come back and ask me some questions before they got here, and we can put it all together. I think that's, that's good. But, and they also said they, they wanted, wanted it closed sooner rather than later, because they feel it's safety issues up there. And I heard that from more than one person up there. Right now, it's gonna be, like, it would be a barrier, you know, concrete barrier for now. But like I said, I wanna put in a nice wooden rail fence or something, and then some bushes, you know, so that it really delineates. One thing I don't wanna do is to, you know, usually when you discontinue a road, you give half the road to each, I wanna keep that road, because we've got infrastructure under that road, we need an easement, it doesn't make sense to give it away. And I wanna be able to tie my drainage into the drainage that's there and to be able to bring that out. And by the way, we did find more drainage when we inspected out there. We found another manhole, which was buried.
Who was white?
Buried. We didn't know it was there. So we've got that, so it makes the last connection that we couldn't.
Figure out.
Figure out. It was like, how do you get from there to there? And the lines looked like they were going, but they didn't, so.
Oh, good. Something good came out of all that.
Yes, we, uh, we worked many of our divisions together to be able to answer that. We had the engineering out there, we had highway out there, and we had wastewater out there. All working together to find this answer, so it was good.
Perfect. Alright, so we'll have that public hearing when it fits into the schedule. Yeah.
In the meantime, we need to.
Yeah, back to the other issue of that.
Oh, two other things. I am working on traffic counts up there. I've been, I've asked to have that set up to start seeing how many vehicles are actually up there. So that's, that's good to know before I start designing anything. And I did, in the CIP, I just recently put in a Church Street line. I put in fifty thousand dollars for now as a placeholder, cause I have no idea.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Alright. So what, what do we, uh, need on this?
We need a motion to approve the combining the projects, right?
I think so.
Yes.
You need a, I'd like to make a motion to provide approval for these projects to be combined and have the town manager sign any and all documents related to this project.
Yes.
Should we need a dollar amount on that, or is, or it's gonna?
Well, money will be determined.
Did you need a?
Basically, we're agreeing that to combining the projects.
Yes, and that's what that documents.
That she's presented tonight.
Sure, I have it, I can get it.
Would you like, go ahead, add it?
I mean, just, and the increased numbers that's presented tonight.
And, and add that on, and add the increased numbers presented this evening. Does that cover your?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that works.
You have a second for that?
I didn't get a second yet. Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Jennifer. Okay. Are we all good? Does anybody have any questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, six zero zero. Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Number four under old business that council would be presented with the annual update of the town of Merrimack's MS four permit and stormwater program.
Good evening, councilors. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time, and I promise I'm not asking for any money tonight.
Then we'll listen.
I'd like to present our stormwater management program and MS four permit annual update, uh, for two thousand twenty-four in year seven. So I'll run through these, you guys actually saw a presentation, uh, most of you seen this presentation once before. Uh, so I'm gonna run through this pretty quickly, but if you have any questions, please stop me and ask. But the MS four program is, um, is a permit system issued by the EPA and also enforced by the EPA. This permit system allows us to discharge water into our water bodies, and it protects our waters. This area here shows us the MS four areas. So these are the permitted communities in New Hampshire. Uh, we've got it broken up into two different coalitions. Uh, the New Hampshire, Lower Merrimack Valley, that's our, the green area there, that's our coalition. And, um, the, um, yellow-ish, uh, area, that's the Seacoast Coalition. Um, there's kind of a complicated, uh, reason for, uh, EPA's areas for MS four, and it's based upon population density and closeness to their, um, EPA regional offices. So like Concord, which is a, our state capital, and would have the population density to need it, is far enough away, it's never part of that. So it's always a little sticky point.
It, it is, but I see Raymond as an island by itself who's included. That makes no sense either.
Yeah.
So some of these towns are very small, and they have exclusions. So even though they were called in, if they have under a certain population, they could get an exclusion and, and were not included. So it, it's a little, it's a little different over in that area, where all of our area was just, here we are, and we had, we had the populations in each one of them. Uh, Wilton, out in the far end out here, has got the least amount. They only have two hundred people over the, the call-in number. We tried to get out, but, um, it, it didn't work, because there's no waiver form for even two hundred people. So they got pulled in just for that small amount, but that's as far as the MS four goes at this point.
If there's no waiver, how did Concord get out of it?
Because they're not within the area that's from Boston. They have these areas, the distance is out.
It's by a radius.
It's a radius.
Yeah.
It's complicated.
Because there's only groundwater a certain distance from Boston? Is that what we're saying?
Apparently.
I don't know how the EPA gets up and looks at itself in the.
Sorry, Leo.
No, it's okay. Um, I questioned that myself. Um, so the stormwater coalitions, like I said, we're part of the New Hampshire Lower Merrimack Valley Stormwater Coalition. We've got twenty-four communities, and the Seacoast has twenty communities. New Hampshire DES is part of our coalitions, and they're an invaluable resource, honestly, for us. They keep us in line with our permitting and reporting requirements, so really appreciate their help with that. So MS four in Merrimack. Uh, the MS four team is comprised of the DPW admin, engineering department, uh, highway division, community development, building and health, and the fire marshal. We have our, our listed, um, tasks here, admins, we do most of the record keeping and reporting. Highway does our, our maintenance of all of our structures here. And, um, community development approves the site plans, which is, which is an integral part of the MS four permit requirements. Uh, building and health enforcement for, uh, illicit discharge, and the fire marshal al- also illicit discharge, spill response and enforcement and investigation. Pollutants in, in Merrimack are primarily phosphorus bacteria, oil and greases. Uh, Merrimack doesn't have a chloride impairment at this time, which we don't want, and we're working actively to avoid that. Just wanted to point out something that's kind of a, a topic. Just wanted to point out something that's kind of a, a topic we've been talking about in DPW lately. Um, I just wanna point out to everybody who's listening at home, our catch basins are not sewers, okay? Catch basins lead to directly to, directly or indirectly to our water bodies. So please don't throw things like bags of dog poop in the catch basins, it does not go to the wastewater treatment plant, so.
Now, what do you, so for this, for the sake of people, catch basins is the ditch on the side of the road?
Yep, so anytime you see an open grate,
Yeah.
that's a catch basin, that's meant for stormwater. It's not a sewer. Years ago, and I'm talking a hundred-plus years ago, stormwater was caught and it was managed with sanitary sewer. So they were combined systems at one time. Uh, we don't really have any even history of combined sewer, we, we do a little bit, but all of that has been gone, long gone, for a long time. But people's perception kinda goes back to the old ways, people think it's the sewer, you know?
It's a wastewater space, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, all goes to the same place, but it really, it really doesn't, so. Uh, moving on, um, the areas of Merrimack, so the EPA actually has a density, population density area. So each town has their own MS four area, most of our town is in the MS four area, and it's actually been updated because of population density. That bright orange area at the north side of town, all of that is, um, added from the two thousand twenty-two census data. Why is this important? Uh, stormwater all across the town sheds into our major water bodies, uh, such as the Merrimack River, Babuuk Lake, Lake Natticook, Horseshoe Pond, and many others. We wanna protect that, those water bodies. Rising cyanobacteria and E. coli, so like I said before, we have an impairment of bacteria. Again, let's not throw in anything in the catch basins that's, that's directly leading to our impairments. The permit requirements for the, our stormwater management plan, um, which we call Swamp for short, that, that keeps us kinda moving in the right path as far as our MS four permit and our regulations for the town. Okay, these get changed and updated as needed, um, and modified as, as the permit allows. Uh, presently, we're in year seven of technically a five-year permit. So it, it continues this year, they, or this permit series, they allowed a continuation up to year ten. So it's technically a year, a five-year permit, it can go to year ten. Uh, what we're being told is that the new permit is being released and we should see something at the end of December. Unlikely we will, but we are anticipating that. So part of the permits, um, have what's called minimum control measures. These are what we're measured upon as goals for the town, um, to keep up with the permit regulations. Minimum control measures, and I won't go through the whole list here, but there's six MCMs and an appendix F and H if we, if you qualify for certain impairments. We do, so we have to follow that appendix as well. Our qualification being phosphorus and bacteria. MCM one, public education and outreach. So we do a lot to try to, uh, reach out to the public. If anybody hears, has a dog, you've already seen our pamphlets with, you know, scoop the, scoop the poop. Other pamphlets we have in town hall here regarding yard waste, grass clippings, fertilizer, that kinda thing. So we do have a, a large outreach, um, not only to the residents, but also to commercial and business property owners, developers, and industrial properties. MCM two, public involvement and participation. We try to engage with the, with the community, we have a annual, um, report status that we have to, uh, fulfill, and that's actually this tonight. So this actually fulfills my year seven reporting requirements, I appreciate it. Other things we do, uh, Touch a Truck, Hazardous Waste Collection Day, Adopt a Road. I mistakenly left the EverSource Free On event, that was last year, we didn't have one this year. MCM three, illicit discharge detection and elimination program. This is just an discharge of anything that's either not stormwater or not groundwater, okay? We do have to investigate these things, chase them down, and make sure, you know, we find them and stop them, so. Um, if you guys probably remember, last year we actually updated this and added the town code, uh, chapter one sixty-eight for this
That's right.
For the section. And so part of the IDDE section, we inventory all of the outfalls in town. It's quite a gigantic list. And, um, we also do wet weather and dry weather outfall sampling, uh, when allowed. Um, it's been kind of an off-year for wet weather, which was a little strange from last year, which was off for dry weather sampling. MCM four, construction site, uh, stormwater runoff control. We're required through the NIPD's permit through EPA to oversee construction going on, private and public, to make sure that they're providing the minimum erosion control and sediment control, uh, measures on sites so that we're not washing sediment into our water bodies. MCM five, post-construction stormwater. So, um, this goes hand in hand with MCM four, this is after, after the construction is done. We want the landowners, including us, to oversee their stormwater infrastructure, maintain it, and, uh, you know, keep it from allowing any pollutants or impacts into our stormwater.
They have to actually report, they report to community development every year, they're required to by June thirtieth, uh, to provide a report. So, this was always in chapter one sixty-seven, but it was never enforced. So in the last four or five years, we've been enforcing that more. So as times going on, we're getting more and more of these reports in, and there are some that require like a, twice a year, um, if they have like a dog park or something where we want sampling done, we require them to do it twice a year. And it has to follow with the land, it, so if the owner sells, it needs to continue with the next owner. And it's very important to, that we do this.
So you said you work with community development, and they're in fact working with the planning board to make sure that these go on, the different plans, site plans and whatnot?
Yep.
So when you mentioned site plans, you were talking almost specifically about the site plans that go before the planning board.
Site plan subdivisions, if you're doing a road, um, some of the roads will remain private, and some of the roads become town roads. And then the drainage, along with those associated roads, if they're given to the town, we also accept the drainage. If you look in all the easements that we get, when I come in for an acceptance, it'll have that with it. If it's, remains private, all of the, those private roads would have an associated private drainage system because you can't let it come off of the site anymore than what was the coming off previously.
Right, and I just brought that up to, to just to point out that you are in fact reviewing all the different site plans that come forward to the planning board, and so it allows you to help work this.
Yes.
We do, yeah. That's actually
Yes, we make sure there, all of those notes are put on the plans, not that anybody reads the plans, but we do enforce it.
Of course they do.
And we have pre and post-construction meetings with the contractors and with the homeowners to drive all of this, um, home, you know, the importance of it. In fact, we've actually developed, uh, something we give out to the contractors, um, for this, the MS four, you know, and for construction. We, we have a sheet of paper that they can read, and this is what you gotta follow.
Great, thank you.
So MCM six, good housekeeping, this is a little bit more geared towards us. This is, um, for our parks, open spaces, highway building, uh, town buildings, what have you. Um, but it's also same premise, we're trying to keep the waterways clean, so we need to, uh, you know, keep storage of vehicles inside, um, address spills of containment, washwaters and what have you. This also includes inspection, uh, yearly, uh, SWIP inspection for which was on the other page, actually. It also includes, so, specific to Merrimack, you know, our winter road maintenance as well. So all of our highway personnel are green pro sno- green, snow pro trained. They're not yet certified, we're going through something like that, but, um, right now they're trained as that. Again, to prevent any chloride issues that we may, you know, may be able to prevent, so. Appendix F and H, this is actually specific to, uh, either phosphorus, nitrogen, eh, any types of, of specific impacts that the EPA have, has a s- interest in. And for us, that's phosphorus. So we do have to have a yearly reporting on, uh, phosphorus loading, which is runoff that may contain phosphorus either from roads, from construction, uh, from sediment generating type of activities. And then we need to be able to treat that runoff to reduce the phosphorus amount that's actually getting into water bodies. So at this point in time, we're working with UNH on a program called PTAP. Um, not just us, but the, the coalitions, DES, um, but we'll be tracking the amount of phosphorus that is generated in town, and then all of the best management practices that we have in place to remove that phosphorus. And each year, it's expected of us to try to do a little bit more to remove a little bit more phosphorus out of the, out of the, uh, water bodies.
And that's why the CWSRF grants that we've been going after are really important because they target Babuuk Lake. We've also been trying to target like H- Horseshoe Pond, and those are the two main ones that we have issues with. So that's what we're trying to get some grant money to be able to do these designs, to be able to come up with the solutions that we need to be able to meet these requirements.
So, like I said, this is year seven, we're in it right now. Our tasks for this year that we're, we're attempting to complete all, all of this year is, um, obviously, we continue all of our yearly requirements. Uh, we're gonna be updating the stormwater management plan, the swamp, and the IDDE plan. Uh, not the town code, but just the plans that are the background information to that. We're gonna be utilizing that UNH PTAP program to track the phosphorus amounts, and I wanna be able to report on that for next year. Um, we're working on a, a promotion for, uh, promoting homeowner participation in education, specifically for Horseshoe Pond. I've gone after the clean water SRF grants for two years now, or for two cycles, and we just missed it this past year. We're still gonna go after it next year, but we do feel like if we go to the homeowners, talk to them about participating in this, trying to be interested in quality of the water right next door, um, that gives us a little bit, uh, maybe a, a leg up on our competition for the next round of the SRF, but also we'll be actively working on our water quality anyway, so. Also, we're required to install at least one more BMP in town. We did this year, we put in an infiltration trench, trench on Windsor Drive to control water flow. If anybody knows that area, it's quite steep. Uh, so it was used to control water flow, both speed and to try to infiltrate as much as we could on that. And we're also gonna continue our efforts on salt reduction on the roads. Should be noted that, you know, our highway group is wor- working very hard to reduce the amount of chlorides that we have, especially in the wellhead of protection areas, so. And, uh, guys have any questions, comments?
So, let me just, real quick, so is the state, uh, highway department also working with us to reduce chloride?
Say they are. Yes, uh, so, in fact, we just had a meeting today with MVD. Uh, he gave us our coalition group, a tour of the, um, was it wells two and three? Two and, two and nine. So that, that general, that wellhead area next to, uh, Continental or on the backside of it. So Ron Miner gave us the tour, it was, it was excellent. And he's had, uh, a group of interested parties, which are people, towns, people from Merrimack, um, landscapers, DOT, us. We're in this group of folks that are trying to work on the chlorides issue. So DOT is participating in this. I noticed on Continental though, is just a personal, um, observation. Our area, we have to plow a lot more, and we have less salt than the areas that the state maintains. That was just last year's, but maybe this year it'll be, it'll be better.
We signed off on the low salt, so this year should be a lot better in that area with the low-salt area between industrial and, and Pennachuck. We signed it, the school signed it, we sent it up to DOT, so they should be starting to use less salt in that area.
We'll see.
We'll see. Very good, so that's our update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. How should we skip one?
I was gonna suggest we skip one, I was actually gonna let Erin go, but she had to step out for a minute because it should be quick, her update. So Matt's here, so we can bring Matt forward for his hall rental and his athletic field change.
Number two hundred new business, uh, we, we review the fees with Matt that we currently charged to rent Function Hall and Wasserman Park, and to consider the recommended fee increases. Yeah, there you go, you snooze.
You snooze, you lose.
He's looking behind his back, he's looking behind his back.
All right, good evening, um, yeah, hopefully mine's clean, clean and simple and, and, um, cause I'm kinda bringing, trying to bring in more money instead of asking for some tonight, so. Um, we were, department heads were asked last month about, you know, looking at all our associated user fees, um, and where there might be times or, or options or opportunities to look at increasing some of those. And so I have two for you tonight. Um, the first one is looking at rentals of the Function Hall at Wasserman Park, which we've been used, doing for seven years now, I think. And, um, these fees were last updated in two thousand twenty. Um, right now, Merrimack residents basically pay one seventy-five for a three-hour block of time. Uh, non-residents pay double that at three fifty for a three-hour block of time. This last year, we had a total of nineteen rentals, of which fourteen of them were resident groups, um, which generated a little more than eighty-six hundred dollars. So we're not talking huge amounts of money here. Our facility is rented from September to May, and the reason we don't do June, July, and August is there's no weather conditioning in the building, and it's pretty miserable, when it's ninety, eighty-five or ninety degrees outside, it's a hundred inside. We did it one year in, in the beginning and said, okay, never again, we had like a wedding and it was a hundred people in the room and it was just, yeah, it didn't work. So we stopped doing summer. And, and so in the background documentation that I provided, obviously, was just some comparison of kind of our, um, neighboring facilities. We are on the lower end of the scale, uh, but at the same time, we also require, um, somebody renting the hall to to generate, provide a certificate of liability insurance, which none of the others do. Part of the reason we do that is obviously to protect the town just in case of accidental damage. That could be somebody leaning a stack of chairs against a sliding glass door and it breaks the door. Or it could be somebody burns down the building in the kitchen, you know. And so the insurance covers us for that. Now, in seven years, we've never had to make a claim yet. But it's good protection to have. But it's, it's usually it's a seventy-five dollar policy if they come through the town's insurance carrier. But it's something that was recommended by Premex and, and has worked out fairly well. We currently operate on a three hour minimum block of time. And then obviously we'll prorate beyond the three hours, you know, additional hours, like if they need four or five. And when we last looked at this in 2020, we were averaging a little less than four hours is what the rental was. So which was why, where we ended up with three. Now our, our usage, they're staying longer. It's about four and a half hours now for the average rental. And at one point in time, we were experimenting with a system similar to what the O'Leary Center does, whereas we'd have somebody come unlock the door and, and then come back at the end of the day and lock it up. And we've had problems with that. I had unfortunately like last year, several of those, I didn't have any staff for a while. And so it was me coming in on say a Saturday to open the building at nine o'clock and, you know, and then coming back later at the end of the day. And, and so, you know, one of the things we always tell our renters is, okay, downstairs is off limits. It's our furnace room, it's our storerooms. There's nothing to see. But people have this innate desire to go and explore. Now I do have security cameras down there, so which ping to my phone, so I know when they're down there. And so like I had one rental last year where I come in, I let him in the building, okay. And, you know, end of the day, you know, we'll be back later, whatever. I hadn't even left town yet. It was five minutes up the road and the camera goes off. So I turn around, I come back, what are you doing? Oh, well, you're, I couldn't get the stove to work and I work in HVAC, so I was gonna try and see if I could just fix the issue. No, you don't touch my furnace, you know. And at the time, the basement is wide open down there. It's been unframed for, ever since the flooding, however many years ago that was, fifteen, seventeen years, whenever that, all my time. And so we had no way to like secure the space. We have since done that, but anyway. And so we've gotten away from the kind of opening and closing rentals just because of those types of issues. So we are now staffing all of our rentals and, and, and so far I've been lucky that I've had somebody to cover these so that it's not me coming in on a Saturday or Sunday. But because the average length of the party has gone up, we're, we wanna switch from a three hour block to a four hour minimum. And, and so what we're looking is obviously covering not only kind of the rental use of that facility and kind of keeping with the, the area prices, but also making sure we're covering that staff cost for somebody to be there all day. And obviously prevents the going into unparts of the building or breaking things or whatever. And so what I'm recommending here is increasing the resident rate from 175 to 300 and the non-resident rate from 350 to six. Now it sounds like a big jump, but it really isn't. If you, if you think about 175, it's fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents an hour and we're jumping to seventy-five dollars an hour, but you're getting a longer period of time than you used to. Like I said, it kind of generates a little bit more revenue for us, but it also is making sure that we're covering that staff cost and just added, you know, cost to maintain the building costs more, you know, electricity costs more, you know.
Propane costs a lot more in the wintertime.
Yeah, that too. And, and so that's kind of where we are on that. And also I'll entertain questions on that.
So you, you said that this puts you comparable with other competitors.
Yep.
But you're not including the seventy-five dollar insurance fee as an expense.
Right.
So does that truly make you competitive? It doesn't, I mean?
Well, so I'll use the adult community center as an example. Now they have a fee structure based on how many people, but I'm not gonna sit there at the door with a counter and, oh, you have forty-nine, oh wait, now you have fifty, now it's gonna be, you know, I don't wanna do that. But our hall, we look out at a hundred people is the most it will, will take. So, you know, John O'Leary's charging 635 as a flat fee for that party. And, you know, I'm at a resident, you know, three hundred bucks. We're still cheaper than they are, you know, realistically. But I don't also don't wanna, I don't wanna price us out of the market. You know, if you look at the Legion, the Legion is 250 for a member of the Legion, you know, so we're, we're in the ballpark. It's, I don't know. That, that was, that was my thought process.
250, you're not paying the 75.
Correct.
So you're at 375, someone has to pay.
Right.
We don't get all that, but, but.
Well, having the staff on hand, I don't know what we're paying hourly for that staff member, but if it's.
Sixteen fifty?
Sixteen. It's coming right off the top of the 75, but. Part of the cost, cause he didn't, we didn't have to do that before. Matt just lived there practically, but.
Still do some days, but.
That, that is not fully loaded.
Oh, that's a full-time employee, that staff?
It could be a full-time employee, it could be a part-time employee, but that doesn't include like social security or other workers comp and stuff. So it's more like.
An hourly cost.
Like twenty-one, twenty-two dollars an hour.
Right.
For that employee at six, eighteen, seventeen dollars an hour. But if it's a full-time person, then it's a little bit more too.
Yeah. So, I mean, I see, I see the point. It's, it's, it's getting to be in the real money part, but, but if it's gonna be rented, if we're gonna do that, we'd wanna make sure everything's covered.
I don't know. I, I hate raising peas unless I can justify them and, and I know you've tried to go through and justify them, but it's, it's felt a little hand waving and so. I, I don't know. I guess. It just seems like a lot, but I haven't tried going out and renting, you know, for, for a short hour, three, four hour time period. I mean, other places just charge you flat fees independent of hours, right?
You know, and beyond, you know, the community center or the Legion or something like that, then you jump into like the banquet halls and stuff and that's a whole nother, you know, then you're talking thousands, you know. We tend to get a lot of like kids birthday parties, anniversaries, you know, baby shower. We had a baby shower last weekend, you know. Those are the kind of things that we tend to get, you know. So we're, we're trying to stay affordable and we're trying to stay on that lower end, you know, and we certainly have some appeal over something like a Legion because we do have the kids, the playground and those kinds of things right there that they can also take, take advantage of while they're there.
And just remember, if, even if they get one to forty-nine people for like John O'Leary, it's three hundred and fifty dollars.
So it's a pretty nice place too in comparison to the Function Hall. I mean, that hurts.
That hurts. But it's, but it's true, but, but you know, and we're not asking for a deposit. What we're asking is for the seventy-five dollars insurance fee. They're asking for a three hundred dollar deposit on top of your 350. So you're paying them 650 for, for fifty people or less.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're just, when, when we set these fees, which was back in 2020, right? A lot of, a lot of the costs have gone up. Propane's gone up. Electricity's gone up. You know, staff time, we were paying somebody ten dollars, twelve dollars an hour to go open and close. Now it's, you know, it's sixteen to, sixteen to twenty dollars an hour, open and close. So we're just trying to cover some of our costs. And we don't wanna come back year after year after year. You know, it's been four years since we looked at it. You do another four years, you know, who knows what these other ones are gonna be. And, and we're just trying to cover costs. We're not, like Matt said, we're not trying to break the bank. It's, it's eight thousand, eighty-seven hundred dollars that we made for those rentals. So, you know, it's, it's still not like we're, we're going out there and, and trying to, to break the bank with this. It's just, it's a facility and we're trying to keep it up and functional and maintaining it and, and, you know, cleaning carpets when we have to clean the carpets and other things. Heat it, heating it is a big thing, especially if we didn't rent it, we could keep the heat at fifty-five, fifty-five degrees. We gotta rent it. It goes up to what, seventy-ish, sixty-five to seventy degrees? So. In a building that, in a building that is not well insulated, in a building that has a lot of glass with those big storm doors and things of that sort. So we're just trying to cover our costs. We're not trying to gouge anybody. It's, it's just looking at it and just trying to cover costs right now.
Yes. See, I don't, I guess I don't see it as difficult as you do, Tom. Cause you're talking about 175 for a three hour. This is a three hundred for four hour. And the difference is twenty, less than twenty-five dollars an hour.
Per hour, yeah.
Which is to me, considering what the fees have done since twenty, that's four years, almost five years now. And it's not gone up twenty-five, less than twenty-five dollars an hour is not a significant increase in my opinion. But that's just my opinion.
All right. So that's just, that's a 50% increase from 50 to 75 per hour. But I think that's a significant increase, but.
Well, what you could also do is just bring it down to, if we were to really equate it correctly and have a three hour to three hour, I mean, they're getting more time. So is that consistent with what you're saying?
If, if that's what they need is more time, then, I mean, you said the average is four or four and a half or something like that.
So they would have paid more than 175?
Yeah, they would have paid two thirty-three or, you know, for four hours, you know, so. Yeah, you're going from fifty-eight dollars an hour to 75 basically.
Matt, and you said that their average is 4.4 hours. So they're not really being billed for that?
Oh, no, no, they.
You would bill, they're being billed for that extra hour.
It, it just, changing to a four hour block, it just, it's less work administratively. Cause now it's just, oh, I don't need the extra. Cause usually it's like, oh, I want an extra hour to set off or, you know, whatever. And it's just easier for us administratively to, to do it on a four hour block now.
Okay. It was a pleasure. This year's been like pulling teeth for a motion.
I know that. Well, I'm gonna make a motion. It might get turned down, but at least a decision will be made.
You got it?
You wanna do it? Go right ahead.
I move to approve the fees that are currently charged to rent the Function Hall at Waserman Park and to consider the recommendation for a fee increase as per the document provided by Parks and Rec this evening.
Second?
To increase the hourly, or to increase the fee for residents from 175 for three hours. Is this what you're looking for?
No, actually you, you start off something about the current fees and I just wanted to make sure you, you, you wanna approve the recommended increase.
I do wanna approve the recommended increase as per presented tonight.
And the recommended change in the hours of minimum of four.
As well as that.
So, so if I may.
To clear it up.
To clear it up a little bit. Move the recommended fee rate of three hundred dollars for a minimum block of four hours for Merrimack residents and six hundred dollars for a minimum of four hour block for non-residents as presented tonight by Parks and Rec Director Matt Kusparis.
So amended.
Agreed.
Who, over here, who was that? Motion by Andy, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Was that an aye?
That wasn't, no, I, I approved.
Okay, no abstention. Six, zero, zero. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, everybody.
Grudgingly, yeah.
Matthew.
Next one I have is, is athletic fields. Now we do not do a lot of, our, MYA and the other in-town groups book up 95% of our availability anyway. So we get adult softball leagues from out of town. You know, realistically, it's Martell and Twardowski softball fields is what we're looking at. I think in the last year, we've had one resident come and book something. Now a resident, if the field's open, they can just go and go. But in this case, it was somebody that had a birthday party and wanted to make sure that they had a space to have their kid's birthday party, which was fine. And, and our fees, you know, were set in, uh, three years ago. And realistically, our fees are in, in a good spot. You know, I think we're comparable to the neighboring towns. What I do wanna change though is looking at Martell Fields specifically. When we were here three years ago, Martell Field obviously has lights on the field and it's the only, uh, uh, field that we rent out that does. Cause Bice Field would be MYA, solely MYA, and same with the ones that reads Ferry would be solely MYA. Who doesn't pay to use the fields. But Martell, part of that discussion three years ago was, oh, well, we have to figure out some way to charge them for the lights. And so they, we had built in this fee of, you know, twenty-five dollars for per hour of use of lights. The challenge is for us administratively is the light system at Martell, first of all, it's old. And it's a simple light switch. You walk into the building, you hit, flick the switch and, and, you know, they're on. And so, you know, with our, those outside groups, we will, you know, I sit there and go, okay, in April, this week, the sunset is at, you know, 6:05 PM and this week it's 6:20 PM and this week it's, you know, 6:30 PM. Okay, what's the reasonable time? We're gonna bill them two hours for this week and next week it's only gonna be an hour, you know. And it's just, it's cumbersome to, to do that. And, and so what I'm looking at is specifically for Martell Field as a way to still kind of cover the lights. But also kind of eliminate that, that administrative headache is, is, and so like I said, right now it's, it's twenty-five dollars per hour, but obviously that, what, when the lights come on in April is gonna be, and, and is gonna be different from July, which is gonna be different from October. And, and so, and the other thing is, there's no way to prevent them from saying, okay, you know, okay, dusk is at six o'clock. They could go and turn on the lights at nine o'clock in the morning. And one, I'd have no way of knowing that. And two, they're just burning electricity anyway. But I wouldn't necessarily know that they're doing that. And so what I'm looking at is specifically increasing the fee at Martell Field as an all-inclusive cost. So at all, all the other fields that we rent out, you know, and we'll use Twardowski as our example. For example, a non-resident pays 75 for four hours, 100 for eight hours and 150 for 12 hours. I'm basically looking at tacking on a 50 dollar fee specifically to Martell. So it would go for, to 125, 150 and 200 for those four eight and 12 hour blocks. So they're gonna pay for the lights whether they're using them or not, cause we're gonna assume that they are. Now that light system is 20 years old. It's starting to fail. You know, we're, we have problems with it every year. And so I'm trying to just think about, think ahead with that, you know.
Matthew, is this, is the lighting similar to Bice Field? Or is it a lesser thing? I'll tell you the reason I ask is there, when those lights were fired up, that we had to add another, I think it was $3,000 to the budget because there's what they call a demand charge for businesses.
Yep, same thing.
That demand charge, just because it went past, I think it was eight o'clock, if you put them out for five minutes, it was substantial increase. So I, I just.
I believe it is.
Same.
If it's, if it's the same thing, if it's a similar lighting like that.
It's the same.
We might wanna pause on this and look a little deeper in the light use, only because I remember adding that $3,000 for the budget.
Yeah, no, the lighting over there is the same. The other thing too is there's a scoreboard over there that they use, which is electricity. It's not just the guys go and play and they're using the scoreboard. And most of this stuff, it's not gonna affect. We, we very rarely rent to Merrimack residents. This is somebody who is renting the fields for tournaments. And he's making money and he's charging 400 dollars for them to play in the tournament, or 300 dollars to play in the tournament. So that's who, that's who Martell uses Martell, is, is those kind of people. And then we do have some leagues that do play out that from not in Merrimack. They're Nashville, I think there's a Nashville league, Matt? Nashville or Manchester, something like that. There's a mix.
There's a Manchester league, there's a sportsplex has a league and then there's the adult softball league.
Yeah. So, you know, the thing is, is that we're just trying to recoup some of the cost. The administrative time of 25 dollars an hour doesn't really work because unless you bird dog it and have somebody down there. If it's an overcast day, they can flip the lights on. And you're right, they do do a demand if it's before eight o'clock with them. We've had to go out there and had people come in and repair some of the lights because some of the wiring is, uh, been chewed up by mice or field, field rodents. Critters. So we've had to, you know, fix some of the lights, some of the light stands. Critters. So we've had to, you know, fix some of the lights, some of the light stands out there. So we're just trying to recoup some of our costs for, for the lighting and trying to make it a lot easier because we can ask them, oh, so when did you turn on the lights? And they'll say, oh, we turned them on at six thirty, we only used them for a half an hour. No. You turn them on at five o'clock because it's starting to dusk. So, and, and this way also, it puts the onus on them to shut the lights off, too. Be, because of the, the residents in that area. Once they're done with the lights, they're supposed to turn them off. So it puts the onus back on them to shut them off.
So is this the fifty dollars, or?
Would cover all, all of the.
All right.
All of that stuff. And we, we tell them, and, and like Matt said, once again, it's not a lot of money, it's only about fifteen thousand dollars a year we get for rentals. But this should help with some of the administration and, and other issues that we've been having.
Okay.
With the rental for some of the tournaments.
All right.
I was just gonna, so you're saying it's sufficient to cover the?
Yeah, we talked it over and we think it's sufficient. You know, I know we like having these tournaments because we think it brings in money into the area. They're not staying overnight anymore. They might be eating at, there's a canteen now there that they open up for tournaments at Martell, so they're basically eating there. What they're doing is they're going to a local grocery store and maybe buying a, a beverage or two. Um, so, you know, it's not, it brings in some money to the local businesses, but not.
Like the old days.
Not like the old days where they would stay at the hotel for Friday, Saturday, and, you know, night, and go out to dinner and things of that sort. These guys, they're one-day tournaments now, they only wanna play one-day tournaments. They start at eight o'clock in the morning, they wanna be done by seven o'clock at night, eight o'clock at night. So.
All right.
But to answer your question, Jen, yes, this should cover it.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Yeah, just, Paul, you said that, that somehow this incentivizes them to turn off the lights?
What will happen is with the built-in, it might, hopefully, we'll be able to get them out of the field sooner because it's on the hourly basis. So if they rent it for four hours, we know they're gonna shut the lights off at, if they rent from four to eight, it's gonna be shutting the lights off. Hopefully, with this amount, I know it sounds oxie, it doesn't sound right, but it should incentivize them, because they're paying more to get these guys out of the fields, off, so they can get out and leave the field alone, so they can get out quicker. So hopefully, it will incentivize them to shut the lights off, because we're including it in the fee. Unless we just wanna say, after four o'clock, you're gonna get charged with a fifty dollar life fee per hour.
But this isn't an hourly charge, right? This is, or is it? Is this an hourly charge?
No, it's not as.
It's up to four hours.
Up to four hours. And what we were doing was, was saying twenty-five dollars an hour for light usage before. Now we're just rolling that all in. So we're hoping that this incentivizes them to get out of the fields.
I mean, you just don't have to calculate.
You've already paid for it, you can walk away and not turn it off, is, is, I guess where I'm thinking it doesn't incentivize.
If that, if that does happen.
Yeah.
Matt knows not to rent to them again.
Oh.
They have to take care, the, the gentleman who rents is very, very attentive because he knows what a great deal he's getting for renting fields in Merrimack. Cause he's tried to rent fields other places and other towns, and they're a lot more expensive. So he's very attentive. When we call him and say, this happened, he takes care of it right away. So if something like that was to happen, we'd say, you're not renting here, he'd be like, oh, well, you know, he's, he'll be very attentive. He actually, this year, the, the issue I'm talking about is at, down at Twardowski's Field, there's been some issues with adult men with MYA soccer and the interactions between what the adult men and the, the kids were hearing. He has sent his assistant down to the field when he has a tournament down there to make sure that they're in line and they behave. So, and that was one thing, and we threatened, and we said, you don't, we're gonna give you a police detail or you're off the field. And he said, what happens if I send my guy down there? And it's worked out with his man being down there. So they're very attentive, so hopefully with this, they'll understand to shut the lights off.
Nancy.
I'm just wondering, isn't there like a way we can have the power to shut the lights off someplace? I'm an electrician, but I would imagine, yeah, well, I mean, it just seems like there should be, the town should be able to control.
I think there was a timer on those lights, and I think that was causing some of the issues we had with the lights.
Again, again, the challenge is, is the light system is old. It's twenty plus, twenty years old, they're, you know, modern systems, yeah, it's, you can program it from a computer or a phone and
That's what I was just thinking.
And say, okay, it's going in, on it this time and off it this time, but the system we have in place doesn't. I think we have in our CIP, I think it's two years from now, Paul, I think is, is looking at replacing the light system, cause they're so old.
Well, I was just thinking, I mean, cause no matter what they did, at least if you know they're supposed to be up by nine, if you shut the lights up at nine thirty, they should have been long gone. And if they didn't, that's the exit queue, but, yeah.
I don't think we can get a timer that specific, because the men's league plays three games on Monday and Wednesday night and Thursday night. They might be playing three games on Thursday with rain. They might go to eleven o'clock at night before the lights go out.
Yeah.
So.
So then you make it midnight or something.
But, but if you make it eleven o'clock to shut off at eleven o'clock, then we, I don't think the timer would be specific enough to say, on a Saturday, you can close it off at eight o'clock at night. Because of the, the, the lights that we have.
Yeah, in a couple of years.
When that upgrade happens.
Well, when that upgrade happens, we can look at all those bells and whistles on the lights.
Yeah, my son controls his lawn sprinkler from his phone, so. All right, so. Jennifer?
I'll make a motion to accept the athletic field rental fee schedule.
Question by Jennifer, seconded by Nancy Harrington.
So just, just to clarify, you're not changing the rates for all the other fields?
Correct, it's just Martell with the lights.
Okay, so the only one we're talking about is that one, where it would have been seventy-five for non-residents, it's going to a hundred and twenty-five for non-residents. Okay, thank you.
All right, no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Six, zero, zero. Thanks, Matthew. Now you can apologize to Aaron. Sorry, Aaron. Counsel and the health officer to meet the annual meeting and reporting requirement, as well as review and complete the summary of readiness to address local public health threats report for the Department of Health and Human Services in accordance with RSA one twenty-eight, it's a meeting we, we have to have. That was an awkward, uh, Jen item, but sorry for putting you off.
That's okay, uh, counsel, thank you for having me tonight. So I am here to complete the.
Is your mic on?
The green light.
Make it close enough?
Is that better?
Yes.
I think so, yep, thanks.
As I was saying, uh, I'm here tonight to complete the annual health officer readiness report. We've done this, this will be the third year now. Some background on that for you all. Three years ago, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services added in this reporting requirement, um, the health officer liaison unit did to RSA one twenty-eight. And the purpose of that was to collect information on a local level, so from, you know, the local, um, health departments in the communities to the health officer liaison unit, and then also just open up a line of communication, um, to kinda bridge, bridge a gap between communities and the state health department. So with that being said, um, I started filling out the report, but this really serves as an opportunity for you all as the Board of Health for Merrimack to bring forward anything, uh, any communications you may have, any inquiries, concerns related to public health. And then I will put that together in this report, and it gets submitted up to the state. So I will open that up to you guys.
Does anybody have any health concerns?
It does, it also doesn't have to be concerns, per se, just anything you may be seeing in the community related to public health. Anything that word of mouth from residents, community members, anything that, you know, we wanna communicate back up to the state department.
Thank you. And Nancy?
Yeah, oh, thank you, Aaron. I was just thinking, one of the things that we're looking at, just legislatively and just what, what we know anecdotally is the relationship between ALS and cyanobacteria. And I know we've had, um, uh, blooms in certain places, and, and I know DES has very minimal, like, one person to test water. And we rely on people around lakes and ponds and everything to, to submit, um, water samples so that they can figure out. Do you have any sense of, um, ALS in, in our community? Cause I don't, I don't know. I mean, any, any sense of, um, what we have in terms of cyanobacteria blooms and any, um, of, of the, you know, associated negative health outcomes? I just wonder about that.
In terms of data, so during COVID, the cyanobacteria, they were really focusing on the local health officers to help collect those samples. Like you said, there was only one person at the state who can only get around so much. And then, you know, provide that information to the, um, DES. They do have a dashboard where they collect all of that data, I'm not sure if you're aware, it's a, it's a pretty good interactive, um, dashboard. So it'll list any active advisories, um, or just warnings, um, that they're monitoring a body of water. And they do have a weekly newsletter, I believe it's throughout the year, but definitely during the summer, I was getting weekly updates with reports of those blooms. So I do think that if you go on that dashboard, you can get a good sense, and that's also something we could probably link, you know, onto our website to have that data more accessible.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wondered about, um, I was aware of the dashboard, but just the, the health impacts to Merrimack community members, I just didn't know if, you know, I know we, the DHHS, we don't have a lot of data collection around a lot of things.
Yeah.
PFAS, et cetera, but I just wondered if you had a sense as, in your travels.
On the human impact, I know cyanobacteria specifically, the, the major concern would be your marine life, your wildlife, with that cyan, cyanobacteria, the health effects. It can have effects, symptoms on humans, but there's more of a concern with that wildlife and the, um, you know, the animals that are living around and in those water bodies.
I, yeah, I'm just thinking, I mean, Dr. Stommel's done a lot of work up at Dartmouth around the, the, the link between human impacts of ALS and cyanobacteria. I just didn't, I was just curious if we had any, cause I don't know what our, um, you know, what, what we have in terms of health data, just wondered, so, thank you.
Yep, and that's definitely something I, I, I can, you know, include in that report, and just something that we're, as a community, curious about, um, so we can put that on the radar. And, and that's what their type of information they're looking for.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Aaron, is the outdoor dining permits, it's down to not applicable any longer?
Yeah, that was, was tracked during COVID, um, so those temporary outdoor dining permits are no longer. We did have a few, um, that went through to get some, it's a permanent outdoor dining space that's set up for the summer with community development and fire and the health, so, um, those are no longer, so.
They don't have to be permitted anymore, or?
They are, it's just on a, they're not temporary anymore, they've went through everything to make sure, to have that license for an annual outdoor permit.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody have anything further for Aaron? Any comments, questions?
Wouldn't know what to ask.
And that's okay.
Somebody posted, there was a rat running around Davis Road, I don't know if that was a, is that a health issue?
There's a lot of rabbits around town, is that a problem?
Rabbits.
We don't see too many rats in town, it's more of a, a city thing, but it is possible, especially around, like, bodies of water, you'll see more of the larger rodents versus mice.
Yeah.
But no major issues that I am aware of.
No, that was just, uh, one of these things flying through social media. But, uh, Paul, would you, were you saying so?
I was just gonna say, if you are okay with it, if you can just do a motion for Aaron to be able to submit the report as presented to the.
So moved.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Tom. Any comments?
I'm sorry, I just have another question. Eric, can you tell us, I noticed on the, the, um, on the activities, it looks like we're on the downshift of food establishment inspections. What do you thi, is that, what do you think that's?
So the data for twenty twenty-four, it, I pulled it as of October.
Okay, so the end of the couple of months.
Um, so I still have from now until the end of December, um, where that number will obviously increase, um, up to that, that amount that we've seen for previous years.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
We've popped around the same amount of establishments, give or take a few, since I've been here so almost five years.
Okay, great, thank you.
Of course.
All right, that was a motion, in case they didn't say her last name, Nancy Harrington, motion by Nancy. Is there any further discussion? No, call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Six, zero, zero. Thank you, Aaron, sorry to keep you so late.
Thank you very much, that's okay.
I'm really sorry for the chief.
That's okay, thank you guys.
Do, if we continue and just do number five, it's gonna be a lot quicker than number one, I hope.
Oh, okay. Okay.
What was that?
He wants to do number five.
Five.
Oh.
So, uh, I have a number five under new business, the council to consider renewing the lease agreement with John O'Leary Adult Community Center.
Um, basically, I reached out to John O'Leary Community Center, they had no changes with the previous contract. In reviewing the term of it, we're really looking for it to be a five-year deal, and they were okay with that. And, uh, basically, everything status quo, they were fine with everything that, that's there, and, uh, they had no changes, and just here with the council to give me permission to enter in this contract with the John O'Leary Center.
Was it five years last year?
Uh, no, it was only a three-year deal last time. But we're already, we're two years, for some reason, it was, it lapsed, and when we were looking at the contracts, like with the MYA, we said, oh, we gotta do John O'Leary, too. And John O'Leary was lapsed already by, uh, two years, so.
When you have good tenants, you're all sad, that's.
Right, you know, and, and they, they work with the church. If the church has an issue, they call them up, and Steve, who is the overseer of the John O'Leary Center, works with them and makes sure that the church is happy because of, you know, that parking lot is a big deal for the John O'Leary Center, so they, they work with them.
And for the church.
And for the church, yes, so, but, uh, yeah, basically, the only change is for a five-year term.
Nancy.
I'd like to make a motion to renew. Oh, yeah, I was.
There's a couple of typos. Section twelve, uh, the third to last word says, during an emergency. Probably should be during.
Tom, 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 your mic.
Oh, damn. The other one, who usually does the best. Section twelve, during an emergency. Section twenty-one, I don't know what that.
Provisions.
I think it's supposed to be provisions.
Yes.
And then, in the last statement, supersede those of paragraph eighteen. The provisions of this paragraph shall supersede those of paragraph eighteen. Is eighteen really the one it's trying to refer to? I don't understand what it's superseding, that within ten calendar days of a request by the town, the con, center shall make available any audit?
Yes, if they, if we ask for an audit and they, they don't present it within so many days, we can terminate the agreement.
So I, I guess it's not critical, I just don't understand, what are you, what, the provisions of this paragraph, meaning that you can cancel it if they violate.
Eighteen.
If they violate anything, they can, you can cancel it, right? It's not just eighteen?
Yeah, but there's other other I believe there was another one that said that we had to give them notice. I'm sorry, I'm not really one hundred percent up on.
I mean, I just, I, I guess I didn't know whether eighteen was that important, that you needed to call it out specifically, and, or if there was some change. And you're saying there was no change, that's.
There was no change to the contract, it was in the previous contracts. So.
Okay, so I don't think that adds anything, but it doesn't detract anything either.
No, it was in the previous contracts, and, and it, like I said, we just, I gave them the previous contract, said, do you have any changes? And they said, we're good, five years, we're good with five years, just call me when you want me to sign. Is what they basically said, so.
All right.
Jen, did you see anything else, or no?
Nope, good show.
Thanks.
The conversion function of words sometimes doesn't convert properly.
Provisions, anyway.
All right.
All right, now you can make your motion. I would like to make a motion to renew the lease agreement with the John O'Leary Adult Community Center effective for a five-year period beginning on July first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-nine. And, uh, provide authority for the town manager to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Jennifer. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Six, zero, zero. When we move up to number one under new business, council to review and consider adopting a town of Merrimack. When we move up to number one under new business, council to review and consider adopting a town of Merrimack volunteer policy.
So earlier this summer, we received a request from one of our commissions about volunteerism for minors, anybody under the age of eighteen. So in reaching out to legal to see what we could and could not do, they asked the question, well, do you have a volunteer policy? And Sharon and Myers' response was, well, we do for boards and commissions, police and fire, but we don't have a general policy if somebody wants to volunteer, say, to work at the transfer station. So out of that, they said, well, we think you should have a policy outlining volunteerism in the town. So this started as a volunteer policy. When we started this, just for under eighteen, year olds to help in, in work in the town. And basically, it was for the Merrimack Conservation Commission. But we thought it would be a good idea to just put the policy in place for every town department besides police and fire and boards and commissions, because they have their own policies for volunteerism. So the major changes that we're looking at is that we follow the child labor laws. If the kids are in school, they can't work so many hours and, and things of that sort, so we're following the, the labor laws. The other thing is, is that we set what they can and cannot use for tools. If you're under eighteen, you can't basically use power tools. Can't use a lawnmower, can't use a weed whacker, can't use a chainsaw. Even if you have adult supervision, kind of, just trying to, if you want to volunteer and help move logs or clean up a trail, you can do that. You just can't use any power tools, because we really didn't feel it was safe for them to be using power tools, even though probably some of them probably can use power tools better than some of our adults in this community. It's just something that the attorney advised us against. Our attorney also advised us to get the, these things signed and to have the department heads responsible for the volunteerism and not making a volunteer responsible for the volunteer policies. They'll know about them. It's just the department head needs to be aware of the child labor laws and who's volunteering to clean up Wildcat Falls, say, for a day. And make sure that, you know, there's certain criteria of how many hours an individual under the age eighteen can work. So, did I miss anything, Sharon? Okay. Sharon was the one who worked on this with me, so I'm just double checking to make sure that I didn't miss anything. And she'll answer all questions.
This is actually timely for me. Last night I was on a municipal association webinar and they talked about volunteers and risk. So I'm glad to see you have the section here about background checks being required for volunteers who may work with children, elderly and vulnerable people. They, Primex did kind of recommend that maybe, you know, if you have a lot of volunteers, you just blanket, background check everyone, just so you don't have to try to sort out who's gonna be working with kids or vulnerable populations. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with it as it is written now, but maybe if you find at some point there's more volunteers, maybe you want to consider just background checking everyone.
We do it with employees, so we can do it with the volunteers too.
I did find one, this is gonna seem really nitpicky word, under A, one A, their involvement compliments. It should be compliments with an E, not an I.
All right, page one. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm involved, okay. All right, yep, their involvement compliments with an E, not an I. Okay, you got that? Darn attorneys.
I know.
That's for my money back.
What do you think? Does anybody have any?
Oh, I did wanna say, having a.
You gotta get to the microphone.
Come over here.
Having an official record that they're a volunteer also protects them for liability in being a volunteer for the town, so that's important for them too.
Yeah.
I have a question, Sharon, and it's probably the, the law. Is it the forty-eight hours of volunteering, is that just the law? Is that the?
That has to do with the, the minors. So that has to do with child, we tried to mirror the child labor laws.
Yeah, no, I just thought that was a lot. I was, so, that's child labor laws.
That's during a week when there's no, no school.
Yep, and then, and then on the, the section above it, that's section two on page whatever, I don't know, page number. But that would cover, it says in a lot, the dangerous activities, not, um, power tools, weed whack. I'm just thinking like a machete. It's not a power tool, but it's a, you could, you would say weed whacking, so that would be covered by.
Those are some dangerous activities, not including, but not limited to, if somebody's using a machete or, um, the old-fashioned, you know, hay.
Sickles.
Sickles or something. We'd be like, no, they can't use those things, because that's kind of a dangerous activity.
They're going to be doing and the department heads will know and make a call or ask Paul if they're com- if he's comfortable with that.
We're good? There's a couple of go-tos here, you know.
Yeah, I, I guess, say the conservation commission is having a cleanup, right? Invasive species. And they call for, hey, if you're interested, come to whatever conservation land Saturday. Everybody that shows up, they have to fill one of these out?
They sh- yeah, yes, that would.
And is there, does that mean that we have to have a department head there that's going to do this? Or is it going to be another volunteer that's gonna make sure, like?
Oh, you're talking about filling out the application when they show up for the day, yeah.
I guess my concern is, are we gonna make it too hard to volunteer? That's my concern.
Right.
I, I, go ahead.
I, I'm just, it's a great point, because I think if it's a, like, standing subcommittees and things of that nature, that's what I thought this would come to. The, you're right. I mean, if you're just having a cleanup day, I mean, the school district's been going through this over the past month or so, because they wanted checks for everybody and it was, it was gonna drive people away. So if they're in groups of people, if they're out there cleaning trails as a group and you have a minor there with adults, there's a group there. And, and that's, you know, that's for a one-time thing. If they're gonna be sitting on a subcommittee that's gonna go out and do these things as a group, that's a little different maybe.
We can have people do this and be on record that they're a town volunteer, they're able to volunteer for the town.
Regardless of activity.
Yes. They put down on the application what they're interested in. And so if they're on record that they're, they're able to volunteer for the town, they could show up for any event that they've.
But what if they just show, what if they just put out on social media?
If I see on, on Facebook, conservation commission posts that, hey, Saturday, we're having a invasive species cleanup day at whatever park. Hey, that's tomorrow. Maybe I'll, I'll show up and go there. Like, who is, who is the responsible party to make sure everybody signs one of these? That, that's when we said, hey, it's gonna be the department heads, that's instantly what I thought about is, are we gonna make an employee show up at all these?
I, I think really the department head, because of the, the child labor laws, would need to, because they gotta track the child labor laws really more closely than saying to a volunteer who might be doing XYZ park, hey, you're responsible to make sure that he doesn't work more than three hours today.
Parental consent as well.
Parental consent, yeah, and get the parental consent. And putting that responsibility on, on a volunteer. It's a great question. It's, to be honest with you, we were trying to solve the issue of advanced volunteerism.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I think it's.
More than a one-day volunteer program. I mean, I, I would think we could have a blanket form that would allow you to put everybody's name on one piece of paper and say, this activity at, at Martell Field, you know,
Yeah.
on October forty-three, you know, covers all these people as volunteers or something like that.
We could add something in here for group activities.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna say, I, I get what Andy's saying. Having worked in child protection, my perspective's a little different. You could have a bunch of people, like, like, at, at cookouts and parties and pool parties, kids drown, because there's a million people there and everybody thinks everybody's watching the kid and, and, and the kid, and the kid drowns. In a group activity where a bunch of people just show up, you don't know who's gonna show up. And nobody's, if it's, like, I just say, I let my twelve-year-old, twelve-year-old, a thirteen-year-old kid go. Who's responsible then if something happens to that kid if I'm not there as a parent? It's different if a parent goes with a kid in a, in something, but I would be concerned about liability for an unsupervised child on town property doing an act for the town, on be- on behalf of the town, without some, some kind of release. I mean, I just, we're a very litigious society now. And the last thing this town needs is a lawsuit for something that happens that we had nothing to do with. It came from a good place, but we're liable because there was a person or persons or, or a child got hurt just trying to help. I, I think it's really important to do that. And I think, like Andy said, you don't know who's gonna show up. So I think we might have to be a little bit more thoughtful about how we do those things. That, you know, do, you know, put out, like, a, you know, a public thing that, you know, we're looking for volunteers. You know, anybody that wants to can fill out this application, just get ahead of it so that, you know, we're not, I mean, because it makes no sense for, to, you, to, to think that you're gonna get people to fill out a form and sign releases and have somebody collecting up while you're trying to do.
They're not gonna volunteer. And, and quite honestly, I don't see anything in here that just restricts it to events where there's children. I mean, we could have adults show up at a conservation cleanup day, but we, they can't volunteer until they fill out this application. This, this isn't only around events where there's children that, that may be harmed. This is adults and everything. I just think we're gonna drive people away and, I mean, if, if I was sitting there looking Friday evening and I saw this and I gotta do all this just to show up Saturday and help, probably gonna find something else to do.
Oh, sure.
They do have liability protection if they're on record as a town volunteer too, so that they're protected doing what they're doing to help you if we have a document saying they're a, a volunteer for the town. So it does protect them, but I understand.
And I, I get your point about, but, I'm not, I'm gonna offend people, so, the knee-jerk reaction on a Friday night to clean up on a Saturday versus the person who is going to fill this form out in advance and, you know, get everything crossed, the I's dotted, the T's crossed. I'm trying to come up with a way, like, your point being, how do we do this without driving away people? And how do we protect the town and these individuals so that if something does happen to them while they're volunteering, or they do hurt somebody else, how do we protect them and the town from, from liability? It's a.
I, I think there's a third challenge is how do you administer it?
And, but that, that's, that's, that's a challenge in itself, but the first hurdle is, how do we not prevent people that wanna volunteer to volunteer and make it so arneous, onerous, onerous, that, that they don't do it and they just walk away, like you said, on a Friday night?
I think what we're trying to do is accommodate having minors come in, because it's been working, it's been working swell for a long time now. So I, I don't know how many minors would be involved. I mean, that's, that's, that would be the big thing. That's.
We're trying to get them involved. That's one of our things as a council, one of your things as a council that you want is more involvement. And how do you get involvement is you get them hooked at a young age.
Nancy.
So to address the, the minor, because that's the biggest problem, I would think. So the part that, the form and everything, I think those are really good forms for, if I'm a parent and I'm gonna let my child go, then I'm taking the risk of whoever they're gonna be around, because, I mean, you do that if you send a kid to a mall. But I'm knowingly allowing my child to volunteer for this activity. That release, I think, is important. To Andy's point about, you know, people showing up, what do we do as a town right now? Like, if, if Joe whatever shows up on a Sunday morning to help out at whatever and he gets injured while he's there, where, where, where does that leave the town or where does that leave him? Is the town liable for, I mean, could he claim?
Say that we were negligent in allowing him to do something.
We could, he could say we were negligent in allowing him to do something dangerous. I mean, that, that could happen. I, I do know that this is, NHMA came up with some of these forms and policies. Like, these are, a lot of communities have these. Our attorney was surprised we don't do that for just regular volunteers, never mind children.
All right.
So does it then become the responsibility of the organizer or coordinator of that event to make sure that everybody that comes is appropriately signed up? Or do we just, like we do today, and just take whoever comes and assume it's their own responsibility to have signed up to be a volunteer or not? In order to be protected by, for liability or?
We would have to send the organizer a list and it'd be a check-in list, so that, you should have, what the, I, I understand, but any kind of volunteer event, any kind of trail cleanup, any kind of park cleanup, there should be a list by the organizer of the people that are there so that we know, at the end of the day, everybody's out of the woods, everybody made it back. Where's John Smith? Oh, he was down over there. And go try to find John Smith to make sure John Smith's okay at the end of the day. What I would see is that we, we would have a list of, to hand out to that person from, the department head would make the list and say, here you go, you're the organizer, Merrimack Conservation, Johnny. Johnny, here's your list for, for approved volunteers. And then they come and check off, oh, wait a second, I don't have you. Do we then say, okay, I don't have you on the list. You gotta fill this out. I understand the dilemma and I'm, I just.
That adds a lot of work on town hall too.
Yeah.
Nancy.
The only other thing, for people that may not wanna go through all that, if, if I, if I'm organizing something and I'm gonna have, oh, people show up, if we don't have them as volunteers, would it be, would something like forms, whoever the organizer is, has a clipboard with release forms and just says, I'm volunteering, my name, date of birth, signature that I'm not gonna hold the town responsible for any whatever. I mean, that would be an alternative for, you know, and if, because if you don't know that, it is, it's increasing risk. And I'm sure that, you know, our insurers are, are thinking that. And I, I think it, I don't know, we just have to be protective of.
Again, this came up because of minors.
I, I would ask Primex, I think, if that was suitable, because it sounded to me like if they're volunteering for your town, they're kind of your responsibility at that time. And they also said you should keep kind of a roll call of checking people in at a certain time, checking them out at a certain time. So if they come back and say, I hurt my back, you know, weeding at the park, then there's some document as to what's actually happened at that time on town property.
Yeah. So, the subcommittees, the conservation commission has subcommittees and they're not, they're not appointed, they're not interviewed, none of that. They're just chosen by the conservation commission, I believe.
Right.
And, and so if that's the case, or these.
They would be volunteers.
They would be volunteers and they would have to go through this.
But we have.
No, but they're, they're excluded in this.
But they're appointed.
They're, and they're, right, because they're excluded on, but that doesn't change, there's no background check in doing that. They're interviewed, but there's, for a first time, well, conservation all the time, every time. But anyhow, so I, I don't know for, if, if the minor conversation didn't come into play, this would have never been on the table, I don't think. It's because of this.
Honestly, we were just asking for a form for minors to fill out.
Yeah, and all of a sudden it grew into multi-page.
And all of a sudden they said, well, you don't, you don't have a volunteer policy, you need a volunteer policy as well. We were surprised that you don't have one, our attorney said, and that's how we came up with this policy.
Did, have we checked other communities, see what they do, since everybody seems to have one?
Right.
Oh, we did not.
Is it this elaborate?
I've seen examples of other communities, the, the application came from another community and we edited it a little bit to make it Merrimack. And the, uh, town attorney, I believe, took what she gave us from a group of other communities. So it's not unusual.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think part of the. Yeah, I mean, I, I think part of the conversation at the school district was like a concession stand. You'd have people volunteering to work that, they're not going to be around kids by themselves, it's a group thing and, and I mean, it just, it could go forever. Yeah, I know. Yeah, the MIA, oh my gosh. Although maybe they do background checks on coach.
No, they, I doubt it, because they're all parents.
Right, I don't.
I, I don't think they do it for the concession sense, but for their coaches they do. I had a background check when I coached.
What'd they find? Sorry for that joke.
Coach for one year.
All right, so I, I don't, I don't know where to go, because I think this is cumbersome for me.
I think we have some good feedback, some thoughtfulness that we've got that we have to think through some more
Yeah.
and bring back answers to those questions about the volunteer that shows up the day of the, the event.
Yeah, I think there's a point, it's one thing if it's scheduled, where you have more time, but it's this last minute.
Yeah, the day of the event, I come because, hey.
So, maybe there's some, maybe we'll combine, combine it a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, have those last-minute releases for those last-minute things. But if you're going to be organized, like, if there's, because you could do this at the beginning, just do it once and you're just cleared for all volunteer, right?
Yes.
So, probably for the majority, you could do it, but you'd hate to discourage spontaneous either.
Right, and that's, that's the thoughtfulness that I was thinking about is, how do we not discourage volunteerism at the spur of the moment? Or the knee-jerk reaction that, hey, I'm going to go and help today because my plans got changed.
I couldn't, right, I couldn't sign up for it, but gee, I, those got canceled, so I can help now.
Yeah.
So, if you look at the volunteer application you have in here, has employment information and stuff like that, it's a two-page thing. That's not something that, that show up on Saturday afternoon, the person's going to want to bother to fill in. But the service statement and agreement is a single page, sign it, I agree to, by, by the town rules and stuff like that.
Sorry, Justin. It just seems like if we could come up with two different forms, the volunteer application for somebody who's going to be volunteering periodically or, or long-term, makes sense maybe to have that background information. But just for somebody that shows up on a Saturday afternoon, a, a simple form
Release.
that they could sign at that spot and, and be turned in.
Maybe we can add a process for things that are for group or, you know, organize things that are either people show up last minute, that maybe we can add a paragraph and requirements for that. And part of that is to ask them to fill out an application if, so the next time, you know, go to town hall or stop by town hall next time after you volunteer filling out this short form and get yourself approved for the rest of the year or something if they want to, anything like that. Or not.
Or not.
You know, they don't, we could have a short-term or, you know, last-minute little policy.
If you try to go after everybody to get education and experience, employment and volunteer history and, and all that kind of stuff, I think they're going to say, that's none of your business, I, you know.
And you shouldn't have to.
Right, but that's what this says.
What my employment has to do, I mean, if you're going to do a background check, right?
Yeah, and I, and I think if they have skills, if they, you know, if they work as a carpenter and they want to, they want to volunteer to be a carpenter and help Parks and Rec do something, I think that's why that's there. We don't have to have it there.
Yeah, see, that's right, that, this is so, like, high school diploma, duh. It's so cumbersome, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, we, we will.
I, I understand the.
You get it?
I, I get it, I get it, I, I get it.
I would not fill this out to volunteer for something.
I, I understand. I understand. You, you have very great questions tonight and brought up excellent points that we will come back with, looking into a little bit further. Yes, the application might be a little cumbersome, but there might be different applications for different tasks.
Yeah, maybe that's why.
You know, if you're going to go volunteer at Waspin Park to repair cabins, we might want to know what your employment history is and, and what kind of background work, you know, you've been doing, do you have skills?
We're going to pick up trash and like.
Yeah, versus, well, I'm going to go walk a trail and, you know, make sure that there's no invasive species on the trail. So, we'll, we'll talk to the attorney a little bit more about this and, and see what, what we can come up with and move forward if, if that's the case. Like I said, the reason why this has been brought forward is because of the, the underage and just to get that cemented, that this is what they're going to do. And everybody would know that the X, Y, Z's here, you know, and he's, even they know, I'm not supposed to use that tool. I can use a shovel, I can use a rake, I can't use a machete or a power tool, a chainsaw.
Yeah. All right, so we'll revisit.
Yeah, we'll revisit.
Thank you.
All right. We have, thanks, Sharon. Next is.
I hate to do this, but.
Are you going to tell me what time it is?
The lawn woods, point of order.
I was ignoring it.
I know you were ignoring, but technically, if you want to go on.
Well, the only thing we've got left is the minutes.
Move to extend the meeting long enough for us to get through the minutes.
Motion by Tom, second by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Thank you, Tom, for carrying on the legacy. All right. Yeah, there we go, you never followed until he came on board, so. Approval of the September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Jennifer.
I didn't find anything.
I did, because. I appreciate the effort, Emily.
I will make a motion to accept the, approve the minutes from September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed or abstained, six zero zero. Comments from the press, there's none, comments from the public, comments from the council. I just want to say that my baby, as everybody probably knows, got married on this past Saturday and my parents today is their seventy-first anniversary, so I want to wish them happy anniversary.
Can you imagine seventy-one years? Who gets the purple hat?
I don't know, I, I asked him this morning, I said, who's this, which one is a saint, somebody has to be a saint here.
They take turns, I'm sure.
That's exactly what they said. So, if there's nothing further.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Tom Cannon. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, six zero zero. Thank you, everybody.